I call the meeting to order for the June 13 regular city council meeting. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Rep. Zerkle, session report.
Yes, sir, as a motion was made by Mayor Protem O'Neal and seconded by Councilman Brad Avery to join the litigation set forth under item number 4A, which relates to cost of damages associated with groundwater monitoring and remediation related to manufacture of PFAS. And the lawsuit will be joining is against 3M Company, AGC Chemicals, America, Acroma U.S., Archima, Buckeye Fire Equipment, Chemguard, Cortiva, Decro Roofing Systems, DuPont, De Numeris, Dynex, EID DuPont, Kitty Fenwell, National Foam, Kimworth's Company, and Tyco Fire Products. And all council members voted in favor of the motion except for Councilor Wagen, who was recused.
Wonderful. Now is the time for the invocation by Dr. Musamil Siddiqui of the Islamic Society of Orange County.
Salaam alaikum. Peace be unto all of you. Good evening. I greet you on behalf of the Islamic Society of Orange County. Thank you for inviting me for this invocational prayer in your August meeting. Let us pray. Lord God, the Creator of heavens and earth, our God and the God of all humanity, we pray to you to bless the city of Newport Beach, its people and its officials. Lord, we pray to you for harmony, understanding, and peace in this city. Lord, we pray to you to guide the council in its deliberations and decisions. We pray that the council members make decisions that are thoughtful, sincere, and good for the city, for our county, state, for the whole nation, and for the world. Because we are all interdependent, interconnected in this global village. We depend on each other. We need each other. Lord, help us to uphold our nation's good values and reputation in maintaining good families, peaceful and caring neighborhoods, education, jobs, health care, safety, security, civil rights, liberties, clean and healthy environment without any discrimination. Lord, we pray that we remain true to our pledge of allegiance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We pray that in all our policies and decisions, we continue to abide by this pledge. We uphold this pledge in the times of comfort and ease and in the times of challenges and strain. Let our democratic values, principles of pluralism, justice, and liberty for all remain our guide at all the times. And let this be our message and mission to the world. Lord, help us to work together and harder to end the culture of greed and selfishness. We pray that as individuals and as nation, we shun all hate, prejudice, racism, antisemitism, and Islamophobia. Lord, help us to keep in mind the golden rule of all religions, cultures, and civilizations. Love for your neighbor what you love for yourselves. Or do not do to others what you do not want others to do to you. Lord, we pray to you to continue to guide us to establish justice for all people regardless of their races, colors, or religious. Lord, help us to respect the dignity and honor of all human beings, rich or poor. Grant us the courage to stand for the rights of those who are oppressed, victimized, or ignored. God bless the United States of America and help this nation to be a shining example of peace, justice, and harmony. Amen.
Thank you. If you will please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, notes to the public?
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Now is the time for council announcements or reports from council members on committee activities, and then time for council members to request an A1 item for a future agenda. Councilmember Kleiman?
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a busy three weeks since our last council meeting. I attended the monthly OCAG and SCAG board meetings. I got to kickoff the morning at the Corona Del Mar Chamber Scenic 5K. And over Memorial Day weekend, I attended the Police Department's Mobile Cafe, as well as the Field of Honor dedication ceremony, along with all the colleagues up here. I had productive airport-related meetings with our Congresswoman, as well as American Airlines. And I got to enjoy watching my son compete against other local teams in the Newport Mesa Classic Soccer Tournament, formerly known as the Pilot Cup.
Thank you. Councilmember Stapleton?
All right. I've got a photo. Dun dun dun. There it is. I want to congratulate the Newport Beach Foundation for our eighth Distinguished Citizen Program. So I'm just so honored for these 31 individuals who are committed to community service and civic engagement. And we're so fortunate to have this next generation engage in what's going on in our communities. So congratulations to our Distinguished Citizen Program graduating our eighth class. Now I think we have over 230 graduates in that program. So something we're all very proud of. I'll let Mayor Protem O'Neal talk about the Exchange Club, the Field of Honors. It was an incredible honor to be included in that and see all that goes on with that. I see some Commodores here with us tonight, and I want to congratulate them on our 60th Annual Athletic Awards Dinner. It was one of the highlights for me. I chaired that event for seven years. And finally, we got two graduates going to the University of Arizona to play some sports. So it was a highlight of mine for sure and terrific job. Our Water Quality Committee met. We're focusing a lot on sand erosion. So if you're focused and interested in sand erosion on our beaches, I would highly recommend you attend our next water quality meeting. I had the pleasure with all my other colleagues to be in the Babo Island Parade. It was the first parade I got to attend, and it was a true blessing. Unfortunately for me, I was with my fiance, and she was way more popular than I was. And everyone was happy to see her. And that was a highlight for us for sure. Went to the Newport Islands Summer Kickoff. That was a lot of fun. Also attended the Babo Village Merchant Association meeting and got to really enjoy that. And then also, congratulations to the Wooden Boat Festival. Had the pleasure of attending that. And they did such a great job at the Babo Yacht Club, putting on a first-class event. And our very own harbor master, Paul Blank, had an entry and was very pleased to see his boat do really well. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant?
So a lot of overlap there with events that I attended and participated in with both councilmember Kleiman and Stapleton, including the Mobile Cafe and the Wooden Boat Festival, the Newport Islands Summer Party, the Babo Island Parade, which was an absolute pleasure for all of us, I'm sure, and the community. Something that I do want to highlight is something that I have a picture for also. And we can put it up. The City of Newport Beach has a new animal shelter. And we were nominated by our Assemblywoman Dixon for the California Nonprofit of the Year in our district. And we were granted that award. So I was invited with the President of the Animal Shelter Board of Directors up to Sacramento for a Nonprofits Day luncheon honoring the Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter. And it was a really momentous occasion. We were up there with hundreds of other nonprofits from around the state. And there was a lot of nice eyes on for Newport Beach and the good work that we're doing here. One other thing that I would mention, we have a really unique facility in our city that a lot of people maybe don't know about, or maybe are curious about, but haven't really learned about. And it's the Kirkhoff Marine Laboratory down in China Cove. They have decided to open up their facilities for our community so that we can better understand what's possible there. They have actually been operating there since 1929. They are one of the longest-running marine laboratories on the West Coast. It's actually quite prestigious. It's operated by Caltech in some partnership with UCI. And they've started a new program called Science and Sunsets. And I went to the first one. And it was a really interesting opportunity to tour the facility and understand the needs and also what they can provide to our community and to our global community. So I invite all of you to go online and look up the Kirkhoff Marine Laboratory and maybe participate in one of the Science and Sunsets that they'll be offering throughout the summer. Finally, I do also want to give a shout out to the Newport Beach Wooden Boat Festival. Really unique opportunity in our community. Felt like very old world. And, you know, we pride ourselves on our harbor and our marine opportunity here in Newport Beach. And this is a really unique offering that a lot of community volunteers put a lot of work into. So bravo for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagen?
Yeah, just a little different report tonight. I sit as one of the seven Orange County Parks Commissioners representing the coastal cities. We meet once a month at OC Parks Headquarters, kind of by the Tussin Marketplace. But on June 1, during our meeting, we made recommendations. And it's a recommendation kind of board. We just make recommendations to the county supervisors. But we made a recommendation for the Newport Sea Base on PCH. They have -- was our First Amendment to a lease agreement and extends the lease until 2050. That allows them to spend the necessary resources to improve their docks and the dredging underneath their marina. So I think the board supervisors will ultimately approve it. But we made the recommendation to go forward and support that. And then our parks meets on field trips every third meeting. So this upcoming meeting on Friday, July 7, in the morning, I believe it's at 9:00 a.m. But we're meeting at the Upper Newport Bay Nature Preserve. And that's a public meeting that the Parks Commission does. So it's considered our field trip. But we're meeting at the Muth Interpretative Center.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I am on the Orange County Sanitation District Board and on the Operations Committee. And we had a very informative meeting. And it was a full house. So they're getting back to normal after the pandemic. And it was good to see everybody, all the different representatives of 26 cities on the sand board. Much more fun, though, was attending the Babo Island Parade. And if you missed it, you missed it, because I think it was the best parade yet. And there was so much going on. They had a cavalry, really, about 17 people horseback, most of them from the Vistaderos Riding Group. And they took a ride around the entire perimeter of Babo Island on the boardwalk with the horses, with the cleanup crew behind them. And I thought that was pretty special. And some of the neighbors were cheered, and others were not so sure about the whole thing. But what a great family event. Lots of kids and some politicians riding in the back of vintage Mustang convertibles, you know, the usual apple pie situation. Nobody threw any apple pies, though, and that was good for those of us that were riding along. And I also attended another great event, and that was the Fire Department's Badge Pinning Ceremony. It was something else. I mean, I just see the excellence in our public safety, both of the police badge pinning that occurred months before. But it was, it just, again, spoke to me about what good folks we've hired and what great families they have. I mean, they, their kids were there. And, you know, just the sense of pride that they had in moving up in the organization, some of them becoming firemen, and some of them moving up the ladder to other positions. And our Fire Chief Boils did just a great job of kind of covering the whole thing. And, you know, those things can be kind of long. But it didn't seem that way to me at all. It just was clicking. And just an amazing group of people we have with the Fire Department. And of course, all of our public safety, lifeguards were there. And the police are, you know, same thing. We're just, it blows my mind. I can't imagine another city having comparable public safety team. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. In addition to a lot of the events already discussed, Field of Honor, great job Newport Harbor Exchange Club, 1776 Flags, really amazing job on education efforts. And the celebration itself on Memorial Day was really well done. So again, to our Exchange Club, thank you. The TCA Board that I sit on, we passed our budget last Thursday. It is balanced. And we highlighted again the slide that I had brought forward at the last meeting, talking about the nearly $1.3 billion in interest we've saved on a going-forward basis, based on things we've been doing over the last few years. This coming Tuesday is the first day of Newport Beach Junior Lifeguards. Quick reminder to folks, drive carefully. There will be a lot of kids on bikes and walking. And especially if you're going on the ferry, I would suggest you time it properly. But next Tuesday, the Junior Lifeguard Program starts up. And then for Sunday, Happy Father's Day to everyone who's celebrating. Thanks.
All right. Now is, we're on to matters which council members of us be placed on a future agenda. This is a non-discussion item. Councilmember Wagen has asked council to consider having staff research planning commission stipends in surrounding comparable Orange County cities to determine if Newport Beach compensates its planning commissioners appropriately. Let's take a straw vote.
With Councilmember Wagen voting yes, the motion fails?
Okay. And Councilmember Wagen has also asked council to consider initiating the process of renaming Back Bay View Park in honor of former council member Gene Watt. Mayor Protem, do you have a listen?
Yeah, just a quick question. So on this one, just to be clear, this would require us to waive Council Policy B9 on this issue. I think Mr. Mosher wrote in on that. I just wanted to clarify that that would be the case, as you understand your A1.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Wonderful. Let's take a straw vote.
With Councilmember Wagen voting yes, the motion fails?
Okay. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. That's items 1 through 20. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for a separate action.
Wonderful. Councilmember Kleiman, do you have any items to pull from consent calendar or conflicts to announce related to items 1 through 20?
I do not.
Councilmember Stapleton?
I have a conflict on item number nine because I live within 500 feet of that project, my personal residence. And then item number 17, no conflict, but just wanted to be known that I serve on the Board of Speak Up Newport. And nothing to pull.
Councilmember Grant?
I also have a conflict on item number nine. It is within 500 feet of rental property that I own. And I would also mention that I'm on the Board of Speak Up Newport with that agenda item.
Councilmember Wagen?
Yes, I'd like to pull item number 20.
Councilmember Avery?
Since my house is in the corner of Newport Heights and the border with Costa Mesa, I rarely have any issues with my property being where it is. Hardly anything gets to me. So nothing.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
I'm gonna be pulling item 17. I'm sure there's some folks here for Christmas Boat Parade. I'm not pulling it because of that, just an FYI. But I'm pulling 17.
Okay. And for myself, I have a conflict on 20B. Aaron?
Yeah, I think you're just recusing yourself out of a bunch of cautious because your father's one of the nominees for the Cities Arts Commission.
Thank you.
All right. With conflicts reported by Councilmembers Stapleton and Grant with items number, I'm sorry, on item number nine and number 17 being pulled by me, so number 20 being pulled by Councilmember Wagen, I move the approval of the, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Excellent. We have a second?
One second.
Second, I'm by Councilmember Kleiman. Wonderful. We'll now have public comments on consent calendar items. Feel free to come up to the podium for public comments on the consent calendar. Either one works.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the council. My name is Henny Abraham, and I am a resident of Eastside Costa Mesa. I am here regarding item number 20 for the appointment of the Board of Library Trustee.
That item has been pulled, so we'll have a full discussion. And so I'll call you up at that point, too.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Scott Carlin. The Newport Mooring Association had sent some comments on item number three. Just a couple of word changes. The concern is that certain statements that were made, which were very positive at the last meeting, clarifying or attempting to clarify the transferability question. And I think Commissioner Grant and, not Commissioner, I'm sorry, Councilperson Grant and Councilperson Will O'Neill brought those to the attention of everybody. Unfortunately, the verbal clarifications were not articulated in the code. So if everybody's received this email, that suggests the minor clarification that would lower the anxiety of 1,000 mooring holders. So it suggests that you at least take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. One other item on your consent calendar is number seven, which is the confirmation of nominations to the Water Quality Coastal Tide Lands Committee, which I assume will be coming back for appointments at your next meeting. The comment on that is there is no doubt that there are some members of the committee whose terms, when they were appointed two years ago, expired this year. But when they were appointed, it was thought that their terms expired on February 1 of this year. And this item is saying that their terms were somehow extended to June 30. The explanation here does not seem to be correct. So I hope when this comes back at your next meeting, there will be a clearer explanation of what the terms are. The Enabling Resolution still says the terms start on February 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other comments on consent calendar items? No? Okay. Let's go to, oh, let's go ahead and take our vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three. Ordinance 2023-8, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending section 17 dot 25 dot 20, which is Anchorage Birthing and Mooring Regulations, and 17 dot 60 dot 40, which is mooring permits of the Newport Beach Municipal Code. And the motion carries 70.
Excellent. Let's go on to item 17. That was pulled by the Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I don't need a staff report. My only concern with this entire grouping is the $3,000. I'm sorry, the $3,500 is being recommended to Orange County Coast Keeper, who is currently suing the city, and rather famously, and loudly suing the city. I'm not inclined to support or give money to an organization that is doing so. So I would withdraw, I would, I would suggest we not give $3,500 to them, but instead hold that $3,500 for a separate application from groups that do the same thing. I'm thinking something like Surf Rider or something like that. So that's literally the entirety of my comment on this item. And I wanted to, but I didn't want to try to amend it via consent calendar. So that's my comment.
Wonderful. So we have a, Councilmember Wagen?
I would be supportive of that, but would like to make a friendly amendment to it to see if we could up the Newport Bay Conservancy. They were 5,000. And last year, they received 6,000. If we could get them back to 6,000, that would be my friendly amendment.
Well, I haven't made a motion, but I'd be fine with--
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Just--
No, that's okay. So in, okay. All right. Let me, let me think on that. But when it comes back to us, we'll, we'll figure out how to make the motion. Thanks.
Any other speakers up here? Okay. Let's go to public comment on this. Any public comment on item number 17? Feel free to--
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Bernie Falstad, President Newport Beach Historical Society. With the city, I want to thank you for what you've given to the society in the last few years. I'd like to say that with your $300 million budget or more revenue, I'd appreciate it if you could give more than $1,000 to the Historical Society. That doesn't seem appropriate. We're gonna be, have to probably move before the year's out, the fiscal year, due to the tearing down eventually of the library and the police station-- Fire station. So I would request, we tried to get, we requested 5,000. And I think we should be able to get more than $1,000. I'd like to get the $3,500 that was given up. That would make us happier. So, you know, basically, the Babo Island Summer Concerts and the street fair actually get more than we do. I think the history of Newport Beach is more important. They're, they're under the community charitable events. But I think that we deserve more than that. In past years, many years, gotten up as much as 10,000. But we're gonna have to move. It's gonna cost us more. We have a great anniversary, 100 years, for the lifeguards coming up, August 9. You can put that on your counter. We're gonna have a big dinner and honoring the lifeguards at the Babo Pavilion. So, and we're gonna give part of those funds to the Ben Carson Foundation. So I'd appreciate a little more than $1,000 for our Historical Society. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on item number 17?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, esteemed members of the council. I'm Greg Schwank. I'm the Executive Director and the co-founder of the Newport Beach Film Festival. I am much more accustomed to being on this side of the camera than on this side. But I'll do my best and start off with saying thank you to you and your predecessors for your steadfast support historically of the Newport Beach Film Festival, and humbly request your continued support of what we think is now a very treasured community event here in Newport Beach. I can, I can tell you that as the co-founder, there is, there is no thought in my mind of where we'd be today when we started 25 years ago. And this year, we're celebrating our 24th anniversary. When I look at the nearly 48,000 people who came out last year, when I look at the types of films that we're screening and the response that we're getting from our community, and looking at our, our audience results and their voting, I can see that they are consistently enjoying the films that were coming out year after year. And then from just a purely industry perspective, the Newport Beach Film Festival is now the largest luxury lifestyle film festival in the United States. We are now the largest entertainment event of our kind in coastal Southern California. Nothing in San Diego County, Orange County, or LA County comes close to us. You've got to go out to Palm Springs to find a larger celebration of cinema. And that's a testament to the amazing volunteers, nearly 500 of them coming from our community to support the festival, to an incredible staff and a really supportive board, and amazing partners such as the Newport Beach City and City Council. amazing partners such as the Newport Beach City and City Council. So I just again, thank you for your support and look forward to working with you in the future and hopefully see you out at the movies October 12th through the 19th. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other speakers on item 17? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here.
Yeah, I took a look at the description of the grant request, requested from Newport Bay Conservancy. It does overlap to a certain degree with what Orange County Coast Keeper was looking at doing, including the cleanup events. So my motion would be to approve. Item number 17 is recommended with the modification that the $3,500 recommended from Orange County Coast Keeper be pulled back, 1,000 of that be moved into the Newport Bay Conservancy, and the remaining $2,500 be held for further application to, to accomplish similar, you know, beach water cleanup activities.
If I could just ask, would that be application for this upcoming year that we would want to allocate it or?
I believe so, yeah. So it'd probably be a separate, separate, and quite frankly, given that it's $2,500, I would be perfectly comfortable if the city manager were to award it as opposed to bringing it back as a separate item.
Councilmember Grant.
In relation to the two speakers that we had on grants, I'm wondering if we have any explanation for why we are limiting the grant for the Historical Society to $1,000, given that they are going to be experiencing some one-time costs of relocating in connection with the Balboa Peninsula Library. I'm wondering if we have a, was that part of their grant request or we, do we have an answer?
On what their request was?
Well, clearly that they were granted less money than they had requested, and they have a seemingly good reason to need that, those funds. And so I'm just wondering if we can consider that now or?
Well, we can, can first have Melanie Frances Chini, one of our staff members, who is part of the group, looking through the, doing the review of the application. So maybe, Melanie, if you can talk a little bit about the reasoning for the allocation amount on that one.
Yes, hello, good evening. So we looked at the application holistically, and the main priorities are to fund events for the community and programs for the community. So although there was information in the application regarding the relocation and the cost that, that would come up for them this year, the group decided to move forward in allocating funds that would provide for more programming rather than offsetting costs that may be related to the move.
Okay. Was there anything else in their grant request, or was it just related to moving their facilities?
Their grant request included information about their living histories, so taking information from different community members and recording those, as well as upkeeping the display that they have at one of our facilities.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second. Perfect. We have a motion and a second. Motion.
The motion carries unanimously, this is 7-0.
Excellent. Item 20 pulled by Councilmember Weigand. I will be recusing myself on this one.
I think you're just gonna, you're not going to talk about the Arts Commission, are you?
No, I'm not. I'm gonna, yeah, I'm, I'm going to try to not bat 0 for 3 tonight on items that I have before you guys. You know, it's, it is a little unorthodox what I'm asking here, so I'm, you know, obviously it's kind of on the fly. The Brown Act prohibits me from talking to all of you in advance on that. But on the Parks Commission, you know, our, our esteemed Parks Commissioner Laird Hayes is, is stepping down, you know, due to term limits. And, you know, he, he is just such an asset to our community, the things that he continues to deliver and bring to us. The battle in the bay was the most recent example. I mean, I couldn't think of a more cool thing in our city than Newport Harbor versus CDM in the bay for water polo. But he put that, you know, together. I know he probably had a bunch of other people think of that, but, you know, I, I reached out to Laird and I, I asked him, he didn't come to me at all. This is not him asking to be on this commission for another four years. This is me reaching out to him, and I did so twice. I saw him at a flag football game with my kids. He was out there with his grandkids. And as you know, he's a former NFL ref, so football is near and dear to him. But he was out there, and I asked him just up, up front, if he'd be interested. He said, no, no, you know, I, I don't want to cause a stir on this. But he said if the ability came, he would do it, and he, he would love to do it. And so I, you know, I sat on that, and then I, I just recalled him just the other day, and I said, hey, you know, I'm going to talk about this, and I'm putting myself out there for you. Are you interested? And I know that you're not looking for this, and he wants to convey that, that he's not looking for this. But this is somebody who volunteers at our police department, spends a lot of time, he was there at the open house giving tours of the entire facility. He was an OCC dean. Councilmember Stapleton just did a class with him, I think. So, and the guy's got this vested interest in the city, and he doesn't want anything out of it other than just helping. And the parks beaches recreation is also trees. And trees are more sensitive sometimes than parks beaches and recreation. And he understands that commission inside and out. And I just want to see his name added to the list. I know that we have to bend our policy and our rules to allow it. It's happened before. It doesn't happen often, but I don't see Laird being a controversial person that we would regret making that decision doing. So I'd like to add him to the list of those on the parks and beaches and recreation commission.
So legally, you can waive the policy and add the name if you want to.
And again, you're not voting on him tonight. You're adding him to the list that we will consider at the next meeting. So you have two weeks to decide if what I'm proposing is, is worthy, or you think we should do it. So again, trying not to that 0 for 3 tonight.
Great. I'll, I'll jump out to the public on this one, see if we have any comments on item number 20. Seeing none? Oh, please. That's right. Oh, I, that one's on me. That one's on me.
That's okay. I was reading emails. I apologize. Good evening again. Henny Abraham, I live on Eastside Costa Mesa, so I neighbor on Newport Beach. And my school district is Area 6, which includes Mariner's Elementary School and Mariner's Library. As you have been aware, at the four o'clock meeting, there was a book that was found in the children's section that my eight-year-old and three-year-old frequent a couple times a week.
So this is just for going over who's going to be considered?
The trustees.
Yes. Oh, is your?
I'm going to talk about the trustees.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. And we were originally going to go to the school board meeting that's happening right now, but we realized that it is the school that actually approves the budget for the libraries, and as we are seeing tonight, appoints the trustees for the libraries. It is an absolute, absolute must that whoever gets this position tonight be vetted, and please make sure that they are not okay with having a book that talks about private parts in a children's section about animals. You have a couple of nominees. I'm hoping the incumbent has an answer if they are going to be reappointed for this position. But whoever's going to be in charge of our libraries, especially for Newport Beach, that you guys have your own libraries, I can't say that for my city. It's a countywide library. I can't go to Costa Mesa City Council, but I can come here and ask you guys. For the love of God, we pulled our children out of public school for this shenanigans. We can't have this happening at our libraries. That said, just be very vigilant about who you appoint for the trustee of the libraries because they approve the books that go into our libraries. Thank you.
Yeah, and just for clarification, there'll be no appointments made this evening. This is just moving the group along for consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bringing it back up here. I guess I will make a motion to add Laird Hayes' name to the list of those we wish to vote on to have be on the Parks Commission at the next meeting.
We have a second?
And the rest of the staff's recommendation?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. We have a second by Councilmember Avery.
The motion carries unanimously, this is 7-0.
Yes, thank you. Just like a baseball player, I'm still in All-Star territory.
We now have public comments on non-agenda items. These are items that are not already put on the agenda. If we have anything to chat about, now would be the time to do so. If you are planning on speaking, and there's a couple of you, feel free to form a line, grab a podium on either side. Don't be shy. We're all okay up here.
Hi, my name is Hayley Jenkins. My children frequent a lot of the libraries over here, but especially Mariner's. And a couple months ago, my daughter actually found one of the books that has been up for discussion, I guess, this past week. She pulled it because she's eight, and we always get a whole bunch, and she's at the table, and it's colorful, it has rainbow writing on it. She's flipping through the pictures, and there's little babies, and she can read. And she's asking me, what does it say that this book is about? This little girl is a boy and a girl. And this one says, this person is neither a boy nor a girl. Now, as a parent, that's really tricky. And I laughed it off, and I said, you know what? Some of these books are silly, and they have lots of different things in them, so you know that there are boys and there are girls, but let's just choose a different one. And we closed it, and we put it back on the shelf. And then again, she asked at night the same question. Well, why would a book say something like that? And to hear that over and over again. So imagine my surprise that, I don't know, it's been a week or two ago now, this book came back, it's floating around the internet along with several others, several other really disturbing ones. Now, Mariner's is a big library, has lots of sections, but all of these books are in the children's section, the section that is blocked off Monday through Friday, most of the day, for kindergarten through sixth graders. These books, there's some pictures out there, do not belong in that section. There's a picture of a boy, and this book, apparently it was on display outward, so little kids could grab it from the bottom, full-on masturbating, and you can see everything. I mean, there's a picture of a man bending over, and I understand if a parent wanted to grab something like that from the parenting section and maybe have the birds and bees conversation, that's another thing. But this is not to be in a section with little children. None of these are. There was another book, and I just want you, I know Mr. Weigand, Mr. O'Neill, Mr. Blom, Ms. Kleinman, maybe some others have little children. One of these easy-reader chapter books, apparently it discussed a young girl, and she was good friends with two adult women, and she would go over to their house, and they would hand-feed her cake, and lift up their shirts and rub bellies with each other. And one of the neighbor women was teaching her about breastfeeding. Now, if your child picked that up and started reading that, do you think they'd be confused? Do you think that would be strange? And how would you explain that to your child? Because luckily, when I was at the library that day, I was there with my daughter, so I could explain to her things and put it back. But when it's blocked off for elementary students most of the day, and they can float around on their own without their parents and grab whatever they want, that is really dangerous. So again, I know Henny had mentioned something about the trustees. I really hope you consider who you are appointing when you do do that, because clearly the librarian doesn't have an issue with the books on the shelves, and the current trustees don't have an issue. So I just want you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. I'm, I am going to ask us not to cheer, even though, you know, we appreciate it. A hand up is great. Just let her know you support her. That works perfectly.
I'd like to jump on with her, but I'm talking about something else this evening. My name is Julie Hayden, and I live in Newport Heights. I've been a resident here for about 30 years, and I'm witnessing a change in our community, and it's not positive. I don't believe that I'm out of line stating that we expect our city council to put their residents first, period. Obviously, the homeless situation is extremely complicated, made more difficult by addiction and mental illness, which most of these people suffer from. A popular claim by some politicians is this is an affordable housing issue, and fail to, or refuse to recognize the mental illness and addiction which is at the core of this issue. Look around. Many of these people are not out apartment hunting.
I hate to interrupt. I'm sorry. This is for non-agenda items? That is actually on the agenda, and it'll be coming up as item number 24.
Do you want me to keep going, or do you just want me to do this all over again?
You know what? We'll let you finish this one, but just so we're all aware, the homeless piece, we, we have a full discussion about it, and don't you worry. We, we are concerned up here, too.
Okay. And then a couple of questions. The hope buses that we are either, we either bought or leasing, how do we measure the success of that program? I understand some of the churches in our community hand out gift cards and food to the homeless. If so, enabling people is not a solution, as much as it makes those feel good about what they're doing, and it is a good deed indeed. They are assisting in applying a Band-Aid to a much larger issue, which brings more homeless into our community, and it's not good. Because I don't understand all the politics involved with the homeless situation, what power does any city council have to ensure the homeless situation gets remedied? Are we at the mercy of the governor and his bureaucrats, whose only contribution has been to change the term homeless to unhoused? They blame others for affordable housing, never mentioning the rising crime rate, responsibility for their own failures, and yet have yet to come up with any solution to solve the statewide crisis. Every tax-paying, law-abiding citizen deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items?
Good evening. My name is Jamie Amorosaria. I live in Newport Coast, and I just wanted to affirm the young mom who just spoke about the materials in the library. My kids are grown, they're 22 and 20, and we didn't have these issues. I'm grateful for that, but I'm really sad for the younger families who are dealing with this. So I guess I would just say, please give this some thought. This is just unbelievable, the sexual content that's available to kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on non-agenda items? This would be the time. Okay. We're going to move on to the public hearings now. Says item 21. Ordinance number 2023-10, code amendment establishing the VE Special Flood Hazard Area Overlay District. Mr. Jurges.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Blom and city council members. Simone Jurges, your community development director. With me is Liz Westmoreland, who's our senior planner. This agenda item this evening addresses homes that are in the flood zone on the peninsula. The whole idea purpose today is to propose an ordinance change that allows the specific homes to have a little bit more flexibility on their side yards, because these homes are subject to the FEMA flood requirements. They have to be raised five feet. That kind of takes away their entrance, their balconies, some of that outdoor living space. And so this ordinance today is really to provide that flexibility to expand into that side yard setback areas. Liz is going to go through a very detailed presentation, but I just want to kind of give it some context before Liz jumps ahead. So I'm going to go ahead and turn over to Liz.
Good evening, Mayor Blom, city council members. Liz Westmoreland with the Planning Division. As Simone mentioned, this project is a code amendment to amend the code for 166 specific properties. This is essentially to provide parity between these properties that are located in a special flood hazard area and typical properties that are located along the sand or the boardwalk. The Federal Emergency Management Agency is responsible for mapping flood risks throughout the entire country. And through that, they provide the flood insurance rate maps. And that indicates the areas that are required to carry flood insurance if they have a federally-backed mortgage. What it also does is require certain design requirements during construction for these sites to make sure that they're flood-proof in the event of flooding. Through the years of 2016 to 2019, the city worked with FEMA to amend or update our maps for the entire city. The original maps, the drafts that were provided by FEMA, the city did not agree with. We did not agree with their methodology, and so we ultimately appealed those maps. We were very successful in removing a lot of areas of the city from the flood zones, including areas of the peninsula as well as Balboa Island. However, at the end of the day, we were not able to remove one area of the city from this new VE Special Flood Zone area. So again, to recap, the flood insurance rate maps require insurance, and they also require certain building design requirements. So where is the VE zone? Generally, it's located on West Oceanfront between 24th Street, just west of McFadden Square, all the way to 48th Street, and is designated by FEMA as the VE 13 and the VE 15. And I'll discuss in a moment what those numbers mean. Here's a map of the affected area. Here's a map of the affected area, and I want to point out that all these homes are the first row of homes along either the boardwalk or the sand. It's about 50/50 in terms of how many homes are on the boardwalk versus the sand. The purple area is the area that is designated VE 13, and then the vast majority of these properties are going to be in that VE 15 flood zone. So what makes this new VE flood zone so unique? And this is a flood zone we've never had in the city. This is something we typically see in places like Florida or South Carolina, and also our neighbor in Dana Point. This flood zone is unique because it requires homes to actually raise their finished floor off the ground approximately three to five feet. And they're located on piers, posts, and piles, or caissons, like shown in this exhibit. So in order to figure out just how high these homes have to be raised above the ground, we take that base flood elevation, that 13 or that 15, depending on the zone, we increase that by one foot of basically open space, and then they build the floor system, which typically is about a foot or a foot and a half. And again, this results in homes being about three to five feet above the existing sand today. So what does this mean for new construction? This means that new construction is located above the ground three to five feet. And our existing code already has provisions that allow us to measure the proposed height from that finished floor. So what ends up happening is these homes are about a half a story higher than the adjacent homes that were built before the requirements. Here's an image of a home that is currently under construction. It's almost done, located on Seashore Drive. And this is a home that was built in compliance with those new VE standards. This home is, again, measured the finished floor, the height is measured from the finished floor up to the top. It has three stories. On the right-hand side, you see an image of where the garage will be. So there will be garage walls there. It will look pretty typical from that Seashore Drive or that street behind. And I do want to point out, although minor in this design, that third floor that you see today would be set 15 feet back based on our current requirements. This was built before those requirements were in place.
So, and I'm going to add here, so this design on the left there, so it's a very stealthy design. You don't see any stairways on the side yards, right? So what, the way they designed it, they didn't want to wait for a code update. They didn't want to apply for a variance. They just recessed their entrance stair inside the footprint of the house. So if the council doesn't approve anything tonight, these are the types of homes that you will see. And so the amendment is going to allow that stairway to be sitting in that side yard and not be as stealthy as this design is. This is the only one we have that's under construction. We have two other applications pending for a variance to allow those stairways, because you got to get stairs up to that five-foot level to enter the house.
Thank you, Simone. Here's another image of that home close up from the beach. So you can really see that caisson, that foundation system, that's about five feet above the ground there to the deck level. And you can see the yellow area is pointing to those caissons to indicate that after this project is finished, when it's constructed, it's not going to look like that. They're going to put these breakaway walls essentially around the foundation system to screen that, so that there'll be more security, and it also will visually be more pleasing as well. And I also want to point out that that area under there, although it is pretty high, you have about four or five feet to work with, you're not allowed to put anything there. You're really limited. FEMA allows you to have only a garage, an elevator, and stairs. That's it. No plumbing, no electrical, no living space. So that's a really unusable area underneath that foundation. So because these homes are raised, we're facing challenges. Designers are facing challenges in designing these homes. First is access. How do you get in and out of a home that's raised off the ground? Currently, our setbacks really limit any kind of encroachments within the front or the side. So what ends up happening, like Simone mentioned, is that they actually have to put that stair system, which is about 55 square feet or so, into their buildable area, and that cuts into their first floor footprint, severely limiting the circulation on that floor. The same would apply to the front setback. So in this case, you know, most homes that are located along the boardwalk or the beach, you can simply walk from your first floor out to the boardwalk. In this case, you have a five-foot, three-foot drop. You're not able to do that. So you really are limited in terms of the usability and that indoor/outdoor space. Currently, we do have a provision that allows for balconies to encroach three feet into the front yard setback. So they would be able to still have that three-foot depth, but they would not be able to have any direct access to the beach. This exhibit shows the challenges. So on the left-hand side, we have the beach or boardwalk. There is a stairway there that is about nine feet high when measured from the ground up to the top of the railing, which is very much over our 42-inch limit for front yard setbacks. Similarly, in the side yard setback, we have an 18-inch limit. So this nine-foot raised walkway up to the railing is also very much over our height requirements. So our proposed amendments are to remedy the situation. They provide for raised walkways, decks, stairs, landings, terraces, and their guardrails, et cetera, to fully encroach into the front side and rear yard setbacks. And this is intended to provide for access, like I mentioned, from the house to the ground, including direct access to the beach, as well as provide more usable outdoor space. These side yards and these front yards are really not very functional at this point, being three to five feet below your main floor level. And this is intended to provide for maximum utility and convenience, and to limit the number of variances that are filed with the planning commission. This is a plan view, or a site plan, of the proposed amendments under the most extreme scenario, if someone were to take full advantage of these code amendments. So working from the right to the left, you can see in the two side yards with blue, that they're able to, through these amendments, to have stairs that go up onto a raised deck that continues along the side of the home and then enter the house. And then there's stairs that go down to the beach. Similarly, on the left-hand side, which is the beach or boardwalk, there's stairs that will lead you up to that extended deck. Instead of that deck going out three feet, it can go out to five feet, and they're able to have the stairs. I also want to point in the bottom-left corner, that area does not have any encroachments, because if this were a corner lot, we have the intersection of the boardwalk as well as the sidewalk, and it's critical that we have access and visibility through that space for people, including bikers and people walking. Here's a 3D view of that encroachment scenario that I just showed, so you can get a better idea of it. Again, left-hand side, you see the raised deck extending all the way to the property line with stairs for access, as well as the sort of catwalk area in the side yard. Here's a view from an adjacent property owner. So this is from the side of the property. Again, you have the deck that extends all the way to the front yard setback, stairs, catwalk. And then the area in salmon or orange on this image is really to show what a typical wall or fence would look like today without amendments. So you can kind of see for comparison what would be allowed under the amendments versus what's allowed today. And so you can see that guardrail is about three feet higher than what a fence or wall would be allowed to be today in the side yard. And we have included provisions in the code that require that guardrail to be open-type construction. So that means either plexiglass or something like wrought iron or cable. So it is mostly open, and you can still have the flow of light and possibly air to the side yards. Here's a section view, so that you can see a cut-through of the home if they were to have those two catwalks on each side. Staff has done substantial outreach with the community starting back in 2019, when we adopted the new FEMA maps to provide some education to the community. And then after that, we had two separate meetings with first the design community to gather feedback on our proposed amendments, which are the amendments you see today. And then we met with affected and nearby residents, so both the homeowners affected by the VE zone, and then those within 300 feet. We held a study session with city council late last year, and then we met with the planning commission in May, and they recommended approval. Generally speaking, these amendments have been met with a general acceptance and understanding that these are FEMA requirements that we are not able to control to a certain extent. There were some concerns expressed with privacy to adjacent homes, as well as the site distance and safety impacts I mentioned earlier with those corner lot properties, as well as some concerns about visual impacts for those homes that are behind and who don't have to raise their finished floor three to five feet. To address some of those comments, we've provided these 3D renderings to give you an idea of what these homes will look like. So on the left-hand side, we have a home similar to the previous photos that we showed, that meets today's requirements, as well as the VE requirements. So you can see there's no direct access to the beach, and there's no stairs or other encroachments in the side yards. Whereas on the right-hand side, you can see stairs that lead from the front yard up into the side yard to access the home. And then the deck is also extended the full five feet to the front as well. Here's an image from the corner. Again, we have the three-foot encroachment of the deck with those stairs on the left. You also can see, in the center of the image, is the stairway that is relocated from the side setback, where it would typically be into that buildable area. It's important to point out as well that if this is a duplex, or if there's two units, a single family with an accessory unit perhaps, they would have to provide double the access. On the right-hand side, you can see the catwalk that would be proposed under these amendments, enable them to get in and out of the home. And then the deck, again, on the left, that extends fully into the front yard setback. Here's an image that is from the street side. So as we see Seashore Drive or from an alley, and this is intended to show the difference between what we would allow today and what would be proposed under these amendments. So the green represents a gate or a fence or a wall that can be proposed, that's allowed today. And this essentially blocks all views through the side yard. So if you're standing on the street, you cannot see through the side yard to see the beach or the sand. And with the proposed amendments on the right, you can see the stairs that lead up, and then that guardrail. That's really the difference between what is allowed today versus what would be proposed in terms of height. It's about three feet higher. And with that, I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Wonderful. Councilmember Stapleton.
Yeah, let me just start by saying, Liz, terrific job, great presentation. You took a topic and an issue that is very complex, especially for a guy who's got no real experience in the planning. I really appreciate that. And Simone, to your leadership as well. I know you guys have been dealing with this since 2019, well before my time. My comments are going to surround the fact that this is a massive challenge, very frustrating. I understand it's a FEMA thing for the hundred-year storms. I'm all about protecting quality life, and especially long-term effects that this might have negatively or positively going forward. I'm certainly looking for uniformity up and down the peninsula, whether it's on the boardwalk or on the sand. I think we have some issues that could negatively impact residents, both on the boardwalk or on the sand, and those that live next to these potential new builds. But my concerns are going to be mostly focused on boardwalk issues, as we see. And I know we spoke about this yesterday. I don't know if you want to pull up that photo. So for those of you who are unfamiliar, I've been on the peninsula for 17 years. I've walked this boardwalk, ran this boardwalk almost every week for the last 17 years. I remember this property distinctly when I was sitting with Liz yesterday, and I went home after we met yesterday and took this photo from my iPhone. This is 34th Street on the corner. If you can see that, this is a subterranean, it's a garage and some area, and living space down there. I think it's mostly just storage. So the living space is the first floor. And this is almost a perfect example of what this could look like. When I was standing there on the boardwalk next to this balcony, which would be the first floor essentially, I guess it's probably five foot 10, five foot five when it sticks out. So this is what I'm proposing, that we suggest, no further setback closer to the boardwalk. So go to three feet, not five feet. So we'll have a two-foot setback from the front of the property. I do believe if that setback were extended another two feet, when you're walking on the boardwalk, that is, it just changes the entire vibe of the boardwalk up and down. You would literally have a five-foot balcony staring at your face when you're walking down the boardwalk. So these are all photos that I took where you can see that it is, it, this is really frustrating, because it changes the entire characteristic of the boardwalk and the peninsula. I can't really, I can't underestimate the point that I'm trying to make. When you're standing there on the boardwalk, and you look to your right, if you're on a bike or walking, if that were put out another two feet, it would be extremely aggressive. So that's one of my concerns. The other concern I would have is, I'm okay with stairs in the front of the house, for sure. I think if people want access to the beach, I'm okay clearing that setback where they can have, the builders can figure away within that three feet to have a staircase that extends out. And this downward sloping obviously would hit ground level at the boardwalk or on the sand. So that wouldn't be as aggressive, in my opinion. I do like what you talk about, Liz, about the corner lots. When you talk about the entrance to the side of the homes, I would be in favor of thinking about extending that to middle units as well, where you don't have a, what was the language you used yesterday? You said the minimum amount necessary to get into the dwelling?
That's correct.
Okay. I would be in favor of discussing that. My fear is, in one of the examples you showed, you have a sidewalk running along the entire side of the house from the front to back. That's five feet. So if someone next to you doesn't have a raised house, you're going to be walking, staring into their homes. It's just somewhat uncomfortable.
And Councilmember Stapleton, if I may, Liz did work on some amendment language based on our conversation yesterday, so we have that to propose this evening also.
Perfect, yeah. And then, yeah, that was it, just the side, the side yards. And I love what you did as far as the cutouts on the corners of these side lots, because there is a lot of bicycle traffic and people, pedestrians, so having the ability to see clearly. But in favor of going up to the three feet, not the two feet on the boardwalk or sand, and then minimum setback on the sides. But other than that, terrific effort. I'm good with the height as well, on the overall property, so. But terrific job. Those are my comments.
Councilmember Wiegand.
Yeah, I reached out to Joe on this, just because it's his area. And what a luxury we have to go do a site visit on the, on the boardwalk. I wish those pictures had actual blue skies in them and not gray, but that's a different topic. But I want,
(laughter)
But I wanted to echo what Councilmember Stapleton said. I would support that change in what the staff reported to what he's asking for. I think you go down there, and you, visitors and residents alike, like what it is today. And if we were moving that up, it almost would seem like, you know, it would just be a tight corridor, and just wouldn't have the feel of being on the peninsula as it is today, or being on the boardwalk. So I wanted to back up what Councilmember Stapleton said.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, go ahead and just introduce the revised code language for the council's consideration. Liz, if you want to go ahead and do the honors, please. Talk through it.
We have two sections that we would need to revise to address the two comments from Councilmember Stapleton. So first, in order to make sure that we have that three-foot encroachment instead of the full five-foot encroachment, this language here would restrict decks, balconies, patios, terraces, those types of encroachments would not be able to exceed that existing three-foot setback that we have today for balconies. And then we have created a second section for specifically the stairs to ensure that they are allowed to encroach to the full property line. So that's what we've shown here. We have included it for interior lots as well as corner lots. So that language is just repeated twice in this section. And this would also have to be captured in the identical code language for Title 21. So what you're seeing is Title 20.
So is this?
Yes. And so this is the code language that would address the concerns about the side. So we're essentially mirroring the language that we had for corner lots, where we already said, for corner lot properties with these public views, we want to make sure that you're only providing the minimum extent necessary to get in and out of the home to prevent a full catwalk along this public view. And so what we've done is include this language here that limits those properties, even in interior sides or areas, that they are permitted to the minimum extent necessary to provide access to the dwelling. And what the last part of this sentence does is it allows them to have a stair that goes up from the beach and then back down on the other side. And that's the only language we would have to change.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery.
The house that was last pictured, that example, when was that built?
This home was built in 2009, 2010, before our code change. So we wouldn't allow for that sunken configuration today.
Right. And then, would all new homes be built with the caissons that were shown, those large caissons that appear to be four or five feet in diameter?
That's correct. They can use slightly different methods, but they'd be very similar to that.
And then how deep do those caissons go?
So it's all based on structural analysis. I would think 30 to 50 feet.
But what does that do to the cost of a house?
Just the foundation alone is a million dollars.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Kleinman.
She already, she's good. Thank you. Now, just quickly, I'll say that this came before us when I was on planning commission by way of a variance request. It was approved, and I know that staff, the reason that this is all coming before us now is their attempt to address that need for the variance, and that we certainly didn't want to have 166 homes going through that variance process. So thank you again to staff for all the work that you've done on this. I am certainly amenable to the changes that have been proposed. I think it's a good compromise that allows these property owners to kind of take back a little of what they lost. And I think it makes sense, and again, strikes a good balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go out to public comment on this item. Any public comments on this one?
Good evening, members of the council. Mr. Mayor, my name's Janet Brown, and I live on the boardwalk. And I would like to, I wanted to let you know I had the opportunity to meet with Councilmember Stapleton yesterday, and I communicated with him in writing, as well as with the rest of the council. It appears that staff has addressed, and Councilmember Stapleton has addressed, all of the concerns that I've raised, and I appreciate the attention and that everyone's given to this. I just think it's important that our boardwalk, which is a popular visitor-serving amenity that we have here, that we preserve that uniform front setback line. And so I'm very pleased to see the direction that it appears that we're going in. I really don't have any other comments to make, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I too think that the revisions that are being proposed are wise ones. I did think when we saw the map, it was a little strange that at the south end, FEMA is having a transition zone where the houses don't have to be raised as much, and yet at the north end, there is no transition. It doesn't seem very logical that one house is subject to flood and the one immediately next to it is not, but the world is not entirely logical. I have a couple of minor, first I want to thank the staff for incorporating some suggestions I made at the Planning Commission, clarifying the transparency requirements for the guardrails. I have an additional suggestion or correction, and since there are two ordinances before you, I'll speak, we have a strange custom in Newport Beach, that we adopt one set for citywide for the Title 20, it's called zoning code, and then we copy the same language into Title 21, which is for the coastal zone, although in this case, everything is in coastal zone, but we do that. So I will look at the copy that is for Title 21, which is on pages 21 and, 2128 and 2129 of your staff report. And what I want to talk about is what Councilmember Stapleton also mentioned was the visibility required at the corners, that is important for people on bicycles coming up the little ramp and then they have to make a sharp turn onto the boardwalk, so it's important that be well-defined. This is the copy going to the Coastal Commission, and it's supposed to be all about Title 21. So the visibility triangle is mentioned on both of these pages, and in copying, it is still referring to Section 20.30.130, it should be Section 21.30.130 on both of those pages, it's the Title 21 Traffic Visibility Requirement. But in, on page 2129, Item 3A, about the corner lots, this is just, I hope I can explain this clearly, if you actually look at that code about the traffic safety visibility triangle, it's not clear what the dimension is that you're supposed to use. The idea is from the corner you measure back in the two directions a certain distance, the code doesn't actually address these properties next to the boardwalk. So Liz has put something in here parenthetical that actually is not something you would know from looking at that section, so this is actually defining how much triangle you need, and she is asking for five feet of triangle. So I think instead of being something in parentheses, it should just say, within the traffic visibility triangle formed by measuring five feet from the intersection. There would be fewer words, and it would be clearer that it's not referring to something that you would know from looking at that code section. So I don't know if I explained that clearly or not. And I think we have somebody reviewing the municipal code somewhere, if they actually look at that traffic safety visibility section, some corners are 15 feet, some 10, some 5, and it also refers to something called the Public Works Standard 110-L, and as far as I can tell, that no longer exists, so in reviewing the municipal code, you might wonder what that standard is. But anyway, I think we're defining a new standard of five feet for these particular intersections of a street with the boardwalk, and it should be clear in here that it's, it is a new standard, not something existing, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here.
I would like to make a motion, Liz, did those comments make sense for Mr. Mosher? Is that something?
They did make sense, we've included the reference to the code to provide more comfort for staff for enforcing that if there was another type of intersection, and then we worked closely with Public Works to determine that five-foot triangle.
Okay, so we're good, okay. I'll make a motion to the code amendment establishing the VE for special flood hazards with the amendments that I proposed earlier.
Excellent. And we have a second from Councilmember Kleiman. Perfect, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title, for Ordinance 2023-10, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach Amending Title 20, Planning and Zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to Establish the Special Flood Hazard VE Overlay District. And the motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Wonderful, moving on to Item 22, Ordinance Number 2023, and Resolution Number 2023-30, Approval of the Fiscal Year 2022-23 Fee Study Update, and Resolution Number 2023-31, Approval of the Amending Paramedic Subscription Program Fees. Thank you, staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council, Jason Alunem, Finance Director, joined by Deputy Finance Director Michael Gomez. So the item before you tonight involves the recommended adoption of user fees and charges pursuant to a recently, recently completed fee study that was presented to the Finance Committee. At this time, I'll turn it over to Michael to provide you with the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members, I'm Michael Gomez, Deputy Finance Director. The item before you is an annual fee study update. Department fees are studied annually on a rotating basis, and this year, community development, police and fire fees were studied, will be the focus of this presentation. Before we get into the meat of the presentation, we have a couple slides just to help set the table. There are various types of fees cities have, but today our focus will be on cost recovery fees, these are common fees that are limited to the cost of providing the service. However, there are other fees that differ from cost of service fees such as market rate fees, there are also fees that are set by a higher level of government that we have no control over, we simply pass along those fees that are set. There are also some charges that are thought of as fees but are really a tax, and such as a business license, and then there are fees that are also known as fines. A majority of these other fees aren't set by the fee study, but their fee study and this presentation will focus on cost recovery fees. Our fees that are studied are studied at 100% cost recovery as outlined by our code, but recognizing some, some services may be subsidized as opposed to other, others for various reasons. Generally, fees are thought of on a spectrum of a general benefit versus a private benefit, and those are closer to general benefit, may be subsidized. Certain fees like fire inspections may not be subsidized because they are a specific fee to a company or to a person, as opposed to a recreation class that is providing a service to the community as a whole and may be subsidized. For the study, we continue to follow prior City Council decisions regarding fees that are targeted at 100% cost recovery. The guidance and direction to us regarding cost recovery comes primarily from the municipal code and City Council Policy F4. It's important to note that the municipal code gives direction for fees to be set at 100% cost recovery. A majority of our fees are already set at 100%, which can make the annual update to fees a relatively small process in terms of the actual fee adjustments. We'll now present the studied department fees, updating starting with the Community Development Department. Community Development Department fees were last studied in 2020. The services related to the fees are associated with building permits, plan review and inspections. In the Building Division, there are no new fees being proposed, but there are some cleanups in the fees listing, also known as the Schedule of Rents, Fines and Fees, or commonly referred to as the SRFF. When we talk about cleanups for Community Development and the other departments this evening, we're referring to renaming of fees or moving of fees from one category to another, or, you know, creating subcategories of fees, and all of these changes administratively are really meant to align the fees and the fee tables with the current operations that we have. On average, the Building Division fees are increasing approximately 3%, and in the Planning Division, there are two new fees being proposed, and on average, the Planning Division fees are increasing approximately 5%, but that doesn't include the considerations for the new fees that are being proposed. For the new fees, the General Plan Maintenance Fee is proposed to offset costs associated with the General Plan Maintenance. The fee will be applied to 5% of all new construction additions and alterations for residential and commercial project building permits. This fee is estimated to provide approximately $170,000 revenue annually, which is approximately 12% of the estimated cost to provide those services. This fee amount is similar to local, other local agencies, and this fee was discussed with the BIA and supported by them. Also, the Litigation Defense Fee is proposed to offset actual costs for projects that require external or internal legal support, and based on the proposed fee changes, staff has estimated $500,000 of additional revenue for these changes. Fire Department fees were in part studied last year, but more comprehensively in 2020. The services related to fees are often associated with inspections, EMS, paramedic subscription, and junior lifeguards. There are a few new fees proposed in the Fire Department, and like Community Development, there are also some cleanups in the SRFF. On average, Fire Department fees are increasing approximately 5%. Fire prevention has two new fees that are being proposed, one for fire alarm review and another for fire sprinkler review. Currently, fire alarms and fire sprinklers are reviewed and inspected for all buildings, but this new fee is allowed for cost recovery for multi-story buildings. Our current fee for these services has a base charge and a per-device charge, but with multi-story buildings, review and inspection, this new fee is targeted to capture that additional level of effort and time for studying, I'm sorry, for reviewing and inspecting multi-story buildings. There are also a couple of fees of note in the EMS section, this is also a proposed increase to the emergency transport fee. This fee is related to responding and evaluating and treating our patients, our residents and visitors. It's a 2% increase that will bring this fee to within its 100% cost recovery status. Also, staff are proposing an increase to the paramedic subscriptions, subscription fee. The increase is primarily related to increase in transportation costs, and based on the proposed fee changes, staff estimate an additional $90,000 in revenue annually. The Police Department fees were also studied in 2020, and the services related to the fees are often associated with animal control, special permits and vehicles. Like the Fire Department and Community Development, there are also some administrative cleanups to the fees, but no new fees are being proposed in the Police Services Administrative Section. The proposed increases are to align fees with the current cost of providing those services. In the Annual Regulation Section, there are some new fees being proposed. There are two new fees being proposed in Animal Control. These fees are related to the adoption of animals eight years or older. Consistent with council decisions, these fees are proposed to be subsidized to help increase adoption rates for older animals. Another new fee is administration of court-ordered animal inspections. These fees are proposed to recover 100% of the costs associated with review and inspection of certain animals. Staff are also proposing a fee for unaltered animals that are turned in. This fee will recover 100% of the costs associated with providing medical services to certain animals. And one last fee being proposed is for animals declared as dangerous by a court or a hearing. This fee is also targeting 100% recovery of cost and is associated with gathering and record-keeping of animals declared as dangerous. Based upon the proposed fee changes, staff estimate an additional $30,000 in revenue In addition to the study departments, there are situations where a department may need to propose a fee off their regular schedule. This year, the Finance Department has proposed a pass-through fee for vendor payments. The fee is primarily related to cell phone payments for parking. When the cell phone parking program was, was new, the city paid for these charges as a way to encourage cell phone usage and adoption. Now that the program has gained broad usage, the processing fee associated with payments through the cell phone is proposed to be passed on to the user. There is no new revenue generated by passing this fee on to the users. In terms of the overall fiscal impact, it's estimated that collectively the proposed fees will result in approximately $620,000 of additional revenue annually to offset current cost of providing the services associated with these fees. As previously mentioned, some of the fees are subsidized, and this table summarizes the subsidy for fees discussed today at a total of approximately $9 million. 1.5 million of the subsidy in the Community Development Department is primarily related to the General Plan. The General Plan is updated every 15 years or so, and the General Plan Maintenance Fee is designed to collect over that length of time, so there will be a subsidy, but in time, you know, the, the plan would be that the, the fees that are being charged would be able to offset some of the costs for a future General Plan update. The $6.8 million subsidy in the Fire Department, this is not a subsidy because the fees are not set at 100% cost recovery. The subsidy is a result of insurances or Medi-Cal or Medicaid not paying 100% of our cost to provide services for the insured people or people that are on Medi-Cal or Medicaid. So we do charge 100%, but what we get back from insurances or Medi-Cal Medicaid is oftentimes less than what our cost is to provide those services. And as mentioned earlier, some of the police fees, the subsidy is primarily related to animal control items. To recap the process of how we got here, in parts, the fees were reviewed and supported by the BIA and the Planning Commission, and at the April 13 Finance Committee meeting, fees were discussed, reviewed, and recommended to be presented to the City Council this evening. If the item is approved tonight, a second reading of the fee ordinance will be back on June 27, and at the earliest the fees can be implemented is July 1. And with that, we're available for any questions you may have.
Wonderful. Any questions up here? Seeing none, let's go out to public comments. Public comments on fee study? None? I swear that's what you all are here for. Jim, good to see you.
Thank you again, Mayor Blom. As on the last item, I should have apologized that I didn't have time to put these comments in writing so that the staff could review them before the meeting, but the 5 o'clock deadline for submitting comments is sometimes difficult to reach, especially when other meetings are scheduled for that same time. I want to speak about something that was not in the presentation, which is the Cost Recovery Table, which you are being asked to adopt by introducing an ordinance to amend it, and I'm going to speak to the redlined copy of that, which starts on page 22-73, and I first want to speak to page 22-74. And there is an issue here that I think you need to give direction on staff to get the ordinance written the way you want, and this has to do with the council or city's policy on appeal of coastal development permits. For those of you who are not familiar with this, a local agency approval of a coastal development permit can be appealed through the Coastal Commission if the appellant exhausts all local appeal opportunities, but they can appeal directly to the Coastal Commission if the local opportunity involves any cost on their part. Therefore, we have a provision in here that a coastal development appeal will have zero cost recovery, that allows the appealed, actually not only allows, it requires the appellant to first come to a local body to appeal the item. A past council didn't like things going directly to the Coastal Commission, so that's the reason this is in here. The red line you have is not quite accurate, though. The current recovery table says it will be 0% for appeals from the zoning administrator to the Planning Commission, not from the zoning administrator or the Planning Commission. And the significance of that would be, do you want to have things go to the Planning Commission and then from the Planning Commission to the council before they go to the Coastal Commission? That's what this language would require happens, or do you want to say still just from the zoning administrator to the Planning Commission? And I'm not absolutely sure, but there may be local director decisions that can be appealed to the Planning Commission, and those would go directly to the Coastal Commission if there's any fee involved. So that's point number one, and I see I'm going to run out of time, so that's the problem of not being able to put things in writing. I would point out to you that the Title 17 appeals are written out in dollar amounts, and it's a different dollar amount if you're appealing to the Harbor Commission or to the City Council, which makes one...
Just wrap it up, Jim.
Do you want to hear any more or not?
That was beautiful, and that was great. Go ahead and finish the thought, though, Jim. Go ahead and finish the thought, though, Jim.
In other cases, we're seeing 50% cost recovery. We've crossed out the dollar amounts that used to be for the appeal from the City Council to the Planning Commission. I was hoping you could confirm you understand that the new 50% means not 50% of the cost of the actual appeal, but 50% of a studied amount. But if that is your intent, what do you intend with the appeals that are not otherwise specified, such as when somebody appeals a tree decision to PBNR? Should that be 50% of the actual cost of preparing the appeal, or 50% of what? And I think those questions are a little bit in limbo. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on the fee study? Come on up, Nancy.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Nancy Scarborough, I'm a member of the Finance Committee. I have one very simple question, though it's not complicated. On the page, I think it was three or four, where you started at the top of the building department and went down to fees for litigation. Litigation defense fee. Can, I'd like clarification on whether or not we are actually covering our costs with that fee. It doesn't really define what that fee is and what the cost of litigation could be. And I don't know that you know that. It seems like it's kind of an open-ended question, but I am curious if that's been addressed. Thank you.
The litigation defense fee is to recoup full cost of our attorneys in the event that there is litigation related to a development project.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other speakers on fee study? Great. We'll bring it back up here. Councilmember Wigan.
Yeah, I want to take this moment to do a public service announcement for the Fire Medics Program. We're increasing the fees $2 a month, but honestly, all you attendants or Newport Beach residents, get the Fire Medics Program. It's super cheap. You pay twice every two months, but it protects you and any guest that's on your property, and it works for businesses and their, your employees as well. But should you have a medical incident, you get an opportunity to call 911, and a fire medic will come, pick you up, take you to HOG. You get front of the line, too. You don't have to wait in the ER, so that's a benefit there. But it covers anyone on your property. So for $2 or $7, which we'll increase to, you get that. And then every dollar, I believe, chief, if I have it right, every dollar that's left over gets to be used for equipment and things like that in your paramedic unit. But I do think the fee study for appealing to the Planning Commission, City Council, removing that for a successful appellant, I think that's a good touch. And then as far as the senior dogs, I'm all in favor of those changes. So I would like to make a motion to approve if that's something we can do.
Sure. Let's go to the city attorney real quick.
Just real quickly, Mr. Moser was correct. It should be a 2 and 7 or regarding the coastal development permit, so we'd like to make that change.
And I'll make that change in my motion.
Excellent. We have a second on that? Second by the mayor, Pro Tem. Let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance 2023-7. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Newport Beach Municipal Code Section 3.36.30 related to cost recovery percentages. The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Wonderful. Moving on to item 23, which actually is a riveting item, but I doubt you're here for this one either, is Resolution Number 2023-38, fiscal year 2023-24 budget adoption, budget public hearing, and recommendations from the Finance Committee. This is actually what runs this entire city right here. Okay. Perfect. Staff report.
So good evening again, Mayor, members of the City Council. Jason Alum, Finance Director, this time joined by Shelby Burgwijn, the city's Budget Manager. And so this item, for your consideration, relates to the adoption of the proposed budget for fiscal year 23-24. Before I jump into the actual numbers, I wanted to provide an overview of the budget development timeline, which actually began in the fall of last year with internal stakeholders. As you can see, we have a very robust budget process that provided nine opportunities for public engagement. On May 23, the Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program was presented to the City Council for review and discussed at a study session. We also met with the Finance Committee on May 31 to finalize the committee's recommendations to the City Council concerning the proposed budget for next year. No changes have been made to the proposed budget since the council's study session on May 23. However, I wanted to point out that the Finance Committee has made a recommendation regarding the use of the general fund surplus, which we'll touch on in just a moment. But to recap the presentation that was provided to the City Council three weeks ago, we are projecting a strong budget surplus of $11 million for the year ahead, with continued growth in the general fund revenues, except for sales tax revenue, which we're projecting to be flat next year. The budget is balanced, but the revenues exceeding expenditures. As you know, we've worked hard to enhance our savings programs for long-term capital needs. We also reviewed the city's pension paydown strategy each and every year, and this year we've recommended maintaining the city's $45 million payment towards its unfunded pension liability. It's actually 15 million more than what's required to be paid to CalPERS. This equates to a 50% above and beyond what's actually required to be paid, and really underscores the city's commitment to fiscal stewardship. On May 31, the Finance Committee finalized its recommendations to the City Council regarding the proposed budget. The committee voted to recommend that the city manager's proposed budget for next year be forwarded to the City Council as presented. In addition, the committee recommended an allocation of $10 million from the budget surplus, which includes a $5 million appropriation at the time of budget adoption to bring the total paid to CalPERS towards the city's unfunded pension liability to that $45 million threshold. In addition, two separate transfers of $2.5 million are recommended to the FFP and CIP funds to set aside funding for future capital needs. Really, the purpose of these, the $5 million set asides for capital has to do with, you know, inflation. I think as we've seen over the last several months, we've seen significant increases in construction bids coming to council for award, significantly higher than what the engineer's estimate has been. As a result, these funds could be utilized in circumstances where there is a budget shortfall on a particular project. I did want to point out, though, that the City Council approval is required in order to actually appropriate these funds before they can actually be spent. Well, this slide summarizes the projected revenues and expenditures for the general fund as reflected in the proposed budget, which, as I mentioned before, reflects an $11 million budget surplus. In addition, this slide reflects the Finance Committee's recommendation to allocate $10 million of the $11 million surplus, which leaves an ending unrestricted fund balance of $1 million. However, I wanted to point out that the general fund also has a healthy contingency reserve that amounts to above about $62 million. The CalPERS and the city's municipal code requires annual approval of certain documents related to position classifications and salary ranges. We also have two minor corrections to Appendix A of the Key and Management Compensation Plan, which was actually adopted by the council last June. The Field Superintendent II job title has been replaced with the Water Operations Superintendent Classification that was approved last year. In addition, the IT Supervisor Classification was moved from confidential to Division Management. Before I conclude, I wanted to point out that earlier this month, Fitch Ratings reaffirmed the city's AAA credit rating. The ratings report cited the city's recent history of budget surpluses and a very solid level of budget management, along with a relatively low long-term debt and strong, stable tax base. The AAA rating underscores the city's solid financial standing and prudent financial management, which is credited to the City Council for your exceptional leadership and support. That concludes my presentation. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, guys. Excellent. You want to jump in? Okay. Perfect. Seeing no one up here right now, let's go to public comment on this first, then. Looking your way, Jim. Looking your way.
Thank you, Mayor Blom. Members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. I again apologize for not being able to write out the comments in advance. I have one suggestion for revision to the resolution, which is on page 23-13. One of the requirements in your council policy, I think it's called F3 for the processing of the budget, is that you include in the resolution an authorization to the city manager to make certain adjustments to the budget, and that is shown in the 1, 2, 3, 4, whereas from the bottom on that page. It gives you authority to approve budget increases not to exceed $10,000. It says in any budget activity or capital project. I noticed that the policy that this drawing from was actually revised several years ago, but the spoiler plate has never been revised, and the current language is supposed to say $10,000 in any budget line item or activity or capital project. I personally am not totally sure what the significance of that is, but I think you would want to mirror the, not the language from the policy, put it in here. So I believe it's supposed to say not just budget activity, but line item or activity. Small change, but it seems like we should be consistent. More general comment I would make, as we heard that there'd been a very extensive public outreach program, there are cities that try to do community-based budgeting. In spite of Newport Beach's effort, you're probably aware it's difficult to attract public interest in the budget. And despite all those meetings, as near as I can recall, other than the Finance Committee meetings and myself, only two other speakers, and I don't think any of their suggestions are incorporated in the budget. Speaking of which, the public may wonder that there's not even any council changes to it. In years past, and in the budget adoption policy, it mentions you should be approving a proposed budget and what used to be called a checklist, which was changes since the city manager proposed it. We changed the name of that to, the checklist is now called the Proposed Budget Revision Document. Apparently, there is none, so you're being asked to adopt this with zero changes, not a single one. So the public may wonder what was the effect of the robust public discussion. And then the final comment I want to make, I just discovered this before the meeting, I'm not totally sure what you are approving tonight. There are different levels of budget. This one has a lot of pages. I noticed in the last two years, when this gets adopted, and an official adopted thing is published later in the year, it's a highly condensed form of this, which goes to the auditors. So I don't know if the auditor is looking at this one or the condensed version or exactly what you're approving tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on our entire budget? Okay, great. We're going to bring that back up here. Mayor Pro Tem.
So I want to reiterate a couple of things I said at our study session, which is, thank you to Jason. This is his first full budget, so appreciate all the work that went into this one, you and your entire department. So thank you. To Grace, fulfilling her charter duties to submit a budget, thank you. It's a good one. And to our Finance Committee members, in particular, the citizen members, thank you for your diligence and work on this. And then to my fellow council members, just wanted to say thank you again for trusting me as the Chair of the Finance Committee. We've delivered a solid budget this year that's spending a lot of time and effort on the priorities that I know we all want to make sure we're taking a look at. Really high service levels, by far the largest amount of our dollars go toward people, salary and benefits, and so we remain a service organization. And so I just wanted to say that we'll continue to focus on that. The debt paydown continues to be significant and serious, and as we continue to see uncertain markets as we near fiscal year end, that'll be continuing to be all the more important as we're looking at the pension issues. And then setting aside a lot of money for CIP continues to be a particularly important focus, considering how fast some of the inflation has hit on the bids that we've been getting back. I know Jason mentioned that, but that's going to continue to be a difficult topic for us. So with that, I appreciate the honor of making the motion to approve the staff recommendation with actually the change to the resolution that Mr. Mosher referenced, because I actually looked at the, I looked at F3, and son of a gun, he's right. So let's just make sure that the resolution reflects that language on page four of F3.
I'll second the motion.
Wonderful.
The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Excellent. We're now going on to current business. So it was in the $300 million budget, right? Okay, here's what we're for. This is item 24. This is, this relates to the City Council's ad hoc committee recommendation on homelessness. And there is no staff report. There is actually just the ad hoc committee that is going to give you a little bit of our insight onto what we've discovered, what we work on, and how we're trying desperately to make it better. So, Councilmember Kleiman, you want to tee us off here?
Absolutely. Thanks, Mayor. I know that there are a number of people from the public who have been waiting patiently, so I'll try to be somewhat brief. I want to start by taking a moment to note that this is the single most difficult, complex, and troubling issue that this city and many others are grappling with. Even our governor has acknowledged that the regulatory framework is failing. Everything that we will be talking about tonight is in the context of the desire to minimize the number of individuals experiencing homelessness and falling victim to the circumstances that often accompany living on the street. I also want to preface this discussion by saying that hindsight is always 20/20, and we would not have the luxury of reevaluating our initiatives if not for previous council members like Mayor Pro Tem O'Neil implementing programs in a shelter joint venture with Costa Mesa, as well as our amazing staff and first responders dedicating as much time and resources as these, to these programs as they do. So with a completely different landscape than a few years ago, it's a lot easier to look backward at what has been done and suggest changes than it is to create something from nothing. With all that being said, we've spent about six months understanding the related case law, talking to every city in the county, as well as several in neighboring Los Angeles and San Diego counties about their approaches and successes. We also audited and analyzed every expenditure, every partnership, every effort put forth by our various city departments, which are substantial. Newport is spending about $2.5 million annually for a Newport Beach Police Department homeless liaison officer, a full-time homeless coordinator, a shelter partnership with the city of Costa Mesa, two full-time CityNet homeless outreach specialists, a mobile mental health initiative with BeWell, and a number of grants to outside organizations working with the unhoused population in various ways. This doesn't include the tremendous amount of time and resources expended by staff, public works, and our first responders. Separately, we have $3 million in funds set aside for housing project and have consultants actively looking for a project that would fit that need. The result of our analysis is not that we have to do more than what we've been doing, but that we need to do things differently, in a more focused, coordinated fashion, and with an emphasis on accountability and outcomes. Before we can move forward, we need clear policy with consensus and buy-in from this council and the public. That policy will provide a framework for expectations for all departments, partners, and the community. This committee has proposed some directives that we believe... This committee has proposed some directives that we believe should serve as guidelines for drafting the policy. The overall directive for that policy is to focus all of our efforts and expenditures on what is commonly referred to as "street exits." As the name would suggest, the term of art "street exits" is a reference to getting unhoused individuals off of the street. This may seem like an obvious objective, but the intention is to distinguish the directive from other related efforts such as street outreach. This is not to say that we would suggest discontinuing our street outreach, but rather the emphasis should be on the outcome we are seeking, which is to get individuals off of the street, as the consensus among those most experienced in this complex field is that we can best provide assistance once an individual is no longer living on the street. We are also acutely aware that the death toll for unhoused, the unhoused population in this county has risen from 85 in 2010 to 395 in 2021. Newport cannot solve this systemic problem, but our goal is to get as many people as possible connected to services, including CalAim and into the county's continuum of care. With the emphasis on offering services first, we also have the responsibility to every resident and visitor to consistently and evenly enforce our laws for the preservation of order, which must be a non-negotiable here in Newport Beach. The remainder of the committee's policy recommendations offer additional structure and support of the overall directive, including consistent collection and reporting of data across all departments and partners, the reallocation of grant funds to outside organizations, to city-controlled initiatives that support our directive, and revising all of our current contracts to build in clear deliverables that are consistent with the policy. Again, the purpose of this exercise is to make necessary refinements that focus on outcomes, not output, and create accountability for our goal of getting people off of the street so that they can get the services that they need. Lastly, the committee is recommending the pursuit of additional dedicated shelter beds, either with our existing Costa Mesa facility or through other community partners, engaging a consultant to work to educate residents, visitors, and businesses about our Good Giving Campaign, and the initiation of a code amendment that would clarify our existing anti-camping law, which is out of date and does not give our first responders, our police department, the resources that they need. We're looking forward to hearing from the public and our colleagues on this complex topic, and generally are hopeful for the support on this dais for these recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant, did you want to say a couple of words before we open back up?
Why don't we move forward in the proceedings and then we can reevaluate?
Great. So I think Councilmember Kleinman really kind of outlined what we've been working on for the last six months, very diligently. And so you don't always get responses to all of your emails. Just let us know. There are a lot of them that come in, and we do read all of them. And we're all residents here too, you know, with children and families, and we're just as frustrated as you are. And we're trying to figure out the best way to get through this. So seeing no other comments up here, let's go out to public, and then we'll bring it back up to the dais for some comments on that. If you are planning on speaking on this, which it seems like that's why you're all still here, feel free to line up, and we can move through this quickly. Take it away.
I guess I'll lead things off. Name is Josh Ziak. I own businesses here in Newport Beach, specifically CDM, as well as Costa Mesa. I am also a recent graduate of the fantastic DCP program, which many of you spoke at. Really appreciate that. And I recommend that if anybody wants to get involved with the city, get into the DCP program. Joe and Lauren and everybody did a fantastic job on that. So with that being said, I was here for the budget, Joe, but I guess I'm going to go homelessness here. So the number one concern when it comes to homelessness, I'm a builder here in Newport Beach. I see it all over Newport, specifically CDM. Saw four new homeless people just today. One on my run at the steps down of Big Corona, two sleeping on Ocean Boulevard, and then one in the Bristol Farms parking lot harassing women coming out of the smaller stores around the perimeter. The safety issue is my main concern, although the cleanliness and all that kind of stuff is of great concern. I'll probably focus on the one recent incident at Bandera two weeks ago or so. I brought a local resident that was there as well. You know, homeless man went into Bandera. Cops were chasing him, following him. They took over the parking lot, the cops. The homeless man went into Bandera with what appeared to be weapons, and all of the patrons of Bandera hit the floor, hit under their tables, glass breaking everywhere. He eventually barricaded himself into the kitchen and then the bathroom. And this is really just, the biggest concern is, safety is always the number one priority. None of us like the homelessness issue, but now it's becoming a real problem when our fellow citizens' lives are being at risk. You know, if he had had a gun or something like that, it would be a different situation, right? So he can speak more on that because he was there. The response to the citizens, I don't believe we're doing a great job at that. I post a lot on social media about the homelessness and other issues in Newport Beach. I think it's a poor job. I have calls, texts, DMs, all day, every day, talking about how they reach out to the city, the liaison, or the Newport Beach PD, the liaison, to no response, multiple times, multiple times to no response. I believe there needs to be added help there and budget if necessary. As far as, I don't know what the fiscal impact is of the police and fire resources, but I know it's great, and I don't know what it costs. I'd like to know what it costs. I assume it's in the millions of police and fire having to address the homelessness. Across the PCH from my office at Goldrod in CDM, there was two officers with a homeless guy today for about an hour and a half. And if there's other citizens that are having life-threatening emergencies and this police officer, two police officers are taking care of a homeless guy, it's just, it's lunacy to me, you know? So I'm probably running out of time, so I'm going to bypass a couple of my other points that I'd like to expand on, but I will be forming a grassroots kind of campaign and movement. I know your guys' hands are tied by the state, the federal, and the ACLU. So if anybody in this meeting wants to kind of join in, you can get ahold of Councilmen Stapleton or Kleinman.
Great. Thank you guys much. And there are a lot of people that want to speak, so I'm going to keep it right at that three minutes.
Council of the Board, I'm Andy Temler, resident, current Omar Village, two and a half years now. This here is an image. March 13th, if you want to see bum smoking crack on the front porch. And I asked him to leave, called the police, had the police department on the phone for a good three to five minutes telling me to calm down. What right do we have? What can we do if there is a gentleman sitting there? Or a bum, or whatever you want to call them these days. Smoking crack, multiple times. Asked him, he had foul movement all down his jacket. When the officer did arrive, and I did speak to him after chasing the bum out, throwing my mug at the gentleman to get him out of there, the officer pretty much said I had no rights to do anything about him being on my property. Now, if this was in another state, you pull a gun out and you can do what you want to do. City of Newport Beach, obviously we can't. And the officer asked if I want to press charges, and I said, well, what's that going to do? It's going to put him in jail, and he's going to be right back out on the street, and we'll see him again. And I've seen him multiple times again after he's been to my spot, and I've spoken to other officers about him. Everyone's interviewed him, spoke to him multiple times. Fast forward to a couple of weeks ago, Bandera's, and I've seen bums in and out, nonstop, in the community. Bandera's sitting, having dinner, I got two minutes here, sitting there having dinner with my girlfriend. We eat there every single weekend. All of a sudden, we see cop cars, and I don't know why they're chasing. At the time, no one knew what he was. Obviously, the police knew him because they've interviewed this gentleman multiple times on the streets, chased him directly into a public restaurant where, community, I'm sure everyone here eats at Bandera's, chased him in. I saw him coming, the cop cars coming, and all of a sudden, I yelled, lock the door, lock the door. Some guy got up from the bar, tried to lock the door, couldn't lock it in time. Guy came running in with weapons. Someone said, he's got a gun in his hand. Everyone went, dropping to the ground, plates flying everywhere. I don't even know if the city knows about what happened at Bandera's. Everyone was underground. I put an elderly couple underneath a table, said, stay down, stay down. I grabbed a weapon from behind the bar, threw it at the gentleman that was running by me. All of a sudden, you see the cops running in. Maybe five minutes later, three minutes later, they didn't even come at the beginning. They were out there with their guns, with their shields, coming in and out, trying to figure out. Finally, I yelled at the police department and said, he's in the, I ran through the kitchen, and I said, he's in the back, he's in the bathroom, barricaded. They went back there. Twenty more cops come running in, not even taking a care of the community that's in the restaurant to get everyone cleared out and safe. Still, people are asking, are we safe? Are we safe? Are we safe? The elderly couple that was still sitting underneath the table, I said, it's okay to come out. Let's get outside. Not one officer in there helping. Just, they were trying to attack the person that was in the bathroom, 20 officers at least. Then we're all outside. They dragged the guy out, looking like he was, God knows what, an animal. Brought him outside, he's hobbling out. Everyone applauded to the police department, which I do appreciate for what they did, but at the same time, they didn't help the community 100% that was in the restaurant. They did tell the managers to clear out the restaurant, but that's not the manager's job at that point. They're all panicked, they're freaked out. No one knows if the guy has a weapon in the bathroom.
Thank you.
And at that time, he then came out, and we spoke to the police department, and they didn't, they didn't tell the community a thing.
Thank you. I understand. We got it. Next speaker, please.
Thank you for listening to us, and hopefully we can take care of this problem. My name is Claudia O'Connor, and I've been a resident of Newport Beach for 35 years. And my concern is the following. How do we determine who is responsible for housing or rehabilitating these individuals? It seems to me that we get a lot of influx from other states and cities because of our weather, services, parks, and people giving them money in every corner. I think the first step prior to determining who is responsible is to have a rapid response team that removes these individuals from the streets and places them appropriately, immediately. Where do we house them? First, we need to separate them by mental illness, drug addiction, and true homelessness. Drug addicts and mental illness individuals should be institutionalized and treated. You cannot leave a person that has a mental capacity of really an eight-year-old to fend for their own in the streets. That's inhumane. If we let them out, they will destroy themselves or others. The true homelessness, we should help them. We should, we have the resources. They just need to be out there, so then, and we need to reach those peoples that are leaving on cars and things like that, and give them information that we can help them. Finally, I just want to say that we just cannot allow the fear of getting assaulted deprive us from enjoying our beautiful parks, beach, streets, and even going grocery shopping. And one last thing is, please, if you could put more signs for no panhandling in all the corners, because every time I stop in my car, there's a homeless drug addict waiting for money for his next shot, and I don't know what he's going to do. I have to put all my windows up, I have to lock everything, and it's just not comfortable. And everybody has a mental or a drug addiction problem in their circle. And I, you know, I've had it in my family, and I feel for those people, and it's so sad to see them out there. So we need to institutionalize them. I think that's the best thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Jasmine. I'm a resident and a local business owner, methnasium. I wish I had a solution. I know it's a tough problem. But it makes me feel, when I first opened my business about five years ago, I could leave my door unlocked for customers to stop in. I can't anymore. I have to lock it because I've been caught alone in my center. Some guy coming in, I want to take math lessons. I'm like, okay, no? Like, and it's very uncomfortable. I had a woman urinate in front of my door as I'm working with a student. I opened the door, knocked her over, I didn't mean to, and she starts cursing profanities. I had to lock it quick to keep my student safe. I mean, the stories can go on and on, as everyone has shared. I appreciate Councilwoman Kleinman saying, we don't need to throw more money at it. I don't think we do. I believe creativity and thoughts would be amazing. I remember when I first moved to CDM, the police at the time would tell me, might not be PC, but I don't give a shit. We're going to arrest this guy and get him off the street. We made it uncomfortable to be in Newport Beach. They did not want to come to Newport Beach. And five years ago, when I opened my business, and the lieutenant at the time would tell me, Jasmine, you call and you tell us, and we'll handle it. That vibe changed with switch of leadership. When I called, it went from, yes, we're on it, to, well, homelessness isn't a crime. I understand. I get it. But they're usually doing some criminal activity. When she urinated in front of my door, screaming profanities at me and my high school student, that's a crime. That individual that was on Bandera's, I have a feeling he was the same one I called on who was sharpening a wooden stick in front of my center. Or the woman masturbating in front of the First Cuts. That I found out from the First Cuts owner. So we need to be creative. I want them to know Newport is not welcoming. I don't care what it takes. If it means we have to increase our lawsuit budget, by all means, do it. If it means residents have to become vigilantes, we'll do it. But we need to be creative, and I don't think it's more money. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Sanchez Kobiyashi, and I've lived in Newport Beach most of my adult life. I hope to encourage you to support the recommendations of the Homeless Ad Hoc Committee because they are critical to the safety of the families of Newport Beach and equally critical to the well-being of those living on the streets. Sadly, living on the streets, often with untreated mental illness or substance addiction, has become normalized in many cities in our state. Normalizing means it's okay, it's normal. No, it's not. It's cruel, it's dehumanizing, it's dangerous, and it's inexcusable. Our state has shown us what ineffective approaches to this problem look like. We can learn from those approaches that have led to an increase in homelessness and not make the same mistakes here. I'm grateful for our city manager's comments in recent publications that discourage people from delivering items to this population with the best of intentions because they prolong the inhumanity of living on the streets. Several years ago, the city's Good Giving Campaign began to communicate these very same principles. For this reason and many more, it is essential that we vigorously enforce current laws and municipal codes and work to get our residents, business owners, houses of worship, and other nonprofits in a position to help these people and not to hinder them. To help means taking actions to accelerate their exit from living on the streets. To hinder means taking actions that prolong their suffering on the streets and accelerate their utterly humane deaths on the concrete. In the name of the 85,000 citizens of our beautiful city who should not live amongst disorder and crime, and in the name of the countless souls living in misery on our streets, please do more. Not more of the same, but more of what will exit them from living on our streets and the inhumanity that goes along with it. It takes a commitment, and it takes courage. And I'm convinced that this is a city council equipped with both. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Casey Walters. I live in Newport Heights, and I've been a parent at St. Mark's Community Preschool for the past three years. My three-year-old son has enrolled in summer school, and that starts next Tuesday. I hate public speaking, but I'm here because I am deeply concerned about the proximity of the homeless encampment to the Newport Transit, at the Newport Transit Center on Avocado and San Joaquin to the preschool parking lot. The encampment has grown significantly over the past six months. I believe there was 10 tents today, and it's only 500 feet from the entrance of the school parking lot. It's caused a number of safety issues for the staff, children, and parents. The school has been forced to make calls to the police multiple times a week. Personally, the last straw for me was a couple of months ago. I was dropping my son off at school, and my five-year-old daughter yelled out, hey, Mom, there's a guy peeing on the street over there. Sure enough, there was a grown man standing next to a tent, urinating in public, and my daughter was mortified. It's a lot to explain to a five-year-old. Other parents have had to call police while dropping off their kids, and they felt unsafe. There was an instance where her mom saw a sleeping bag and someone sleeping outside the playground fence. One mom had her wallet stolen during school pickup. I have sympathy for all the local businesses and everyone who's been dealing with this, but I'm here because the bottom line is that it's inappropriate and unsafe for an encampment to be so close to a preschool. It's not the school's responsibility to have to act as police. They are teachers and administrators. They're not security guards and law enforcement. And this is why Sacramento and Los Angeles and other cities have laws banning tents within 500 feet of schools. It's only a matter of time before something more serious happens. I'm asking the city to get involved and resolve this matter by relocating these people. I know this is a sensitive and complicated issue. I'm happy to help as a member of the community in any way I can, and I support the long-term solutions that have been discussed. But it's extremely important that immediate steps are taken within the next couple of weeks. Summer school starts Tuesday. Please take these complaints seriously. It's a ticking time bomb. And by coming here today, we as parents, there's a bunch of us here, are letting you know just how dangerous this is for our children. We will continue to draw attention to this issue as needed and make sure we're heard, whether that means here at meetings or in the media, et cetera. No one wants to be liable if and when something more serious happens. No one wants to be liable if and when something more serious happens. My son just got out of the hospital, he spent six weeks there, he, these kids are quite frankly, the most vulnerable members of our community, and I really ask that you start there first with our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Justin Wheeler, born and raised here for the last 40 years, love Newport Beach. I'd like to start by thanking Councilwoman Kleinman for responding to my emails and my inquiries, I look forward to hearing more about some of the solutions that you have. My daughter attends the St. Mark's Preschool as well, directly across the street from the encampment that I'd like to discuss with you. But first, let me start by saying I fully acknowledge the plight of homelessness and the daunting and complex aspects about it, and it's something I'm very sympathetic to, and also, I take very seriously. And I also understand that looking at the full scope of relieving homelessness is something that requires long-term strategy and significant patience. However, this particular encampment is something, it's a circumstance of frequent concern, impending danger, and requires immediate action. Instances of trespassing, vehicles being broken into, unprovoked confrontations with staff and attendees, as well as some of the other issues that you've heard from my friend Casey Walters, are just some of the issues that St. Mark's has now had to deal with on a regular basis. Simply put, this is a recipe for disaster. You have a demographic commonly afflicted with drug addiction, untreated mental health problems, and they've literally set up camp less than 500 feet from a preschool. I wish I had some simple solutions to suggest to you, but unfortunately, I don't. I'm coming to you because you guys are the elected officials that we've put in place specifically to deal with some of these challenging issues just like this. We can't afford to pass the buck and to pass responsibilities off to other parties, or kick the can down the road and deal with this at a later time. I'm letting you know that this encampment is of major concern to me and my family, and many of the other families here from St. Mark's Preschool, and something really needs to be done immediately about this encampment. Thank you very much for your time and consideration, I look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Dominique Jacetti, I'm the former Assistant Director at St. Mark Community Preschool, which is on the corner of MacArthur and San Joaquin Hills. I'm also a current parent at St. Mark and a former parent for the past four years. When I came to the job about a year and a half ago, I started to encounter the homeless and realized that St. Mark is in a unique position and accessible to them. My first kind of role to take on, one of the instances when they had come onto our campus, was to call the police, and with so much respect for their profession, and anybody who gives their life to service, their comment was that they, their hands were tied and they can do nothing because of the policies and laws in place. So my hope is, as an educator, that is my realm, and as elected officials, hopefully you guys can come up with some creative solutions to protect, as Casey said, these young children. As an administrator, this year, the responsibilities of my job changed abundantly, several times per week, having to encounter the homeless, ask them to leave, get involved in conversation with them, only to the next day or the next couple hours, have to do it again, taking away from my role of keeping our children safe, running the preschool, attending to ouches, calling parents, planning programming, et cetera, et cetera. One of the instances I want to highlight is when we had a homeless man, basically setting up his domicile in our parking lot, kind of hidden among the trees, and he had been using our playground water source as a shower, and he had been coming across the property stealing toys, obviously not in his right mind, which is a whole other topic that I have a lot of compassion for. But eventually, this man started throwing rocks at our playground when our children and parents were dropping off, which led us to have to call the police, and another staff member having to kind of chase him down MacArthur Boulevard. These aren't just isolated events, they're starting to happen, they were starting to happen while school was in session several times per week. My other encounters with the homeless, it's very obvious that a majority of them, while I am not a doctor, have some sort of mental health issue, and some might say the compassionate thing is to let them be, to let them have access to our church and preschool, and some might advocate for that, but I don't think the compassionate thing to do is to let them continue on with their life journey that way. I feel for them, and I hope you guys can help them and us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Lacey Robertson, born and raised in Newport Beach, resident of Newport Heights. I also am a mom of two young daughters, one is three, and at St. Mark's, and the other one is seven months old. I'm not comfortable taking my seven-month-old daughter to school to drop off my three-year-old because of all of the safety concerns mentioned before by everyone else. Imagine if that Banderas incident had happened at the preschool without a whole restaurant full of adults. It could have been a grossly different situation, and frankly, the fact that we're standing here today without immediate action and talking about consultants doing studies is just unacceptable. You guys are each responsible for anything that happens next to our children if you don't take specific steps to remove them from the proximity of the preschool. And it seems like there's a wonderful space between here and the parking lot that all the tents could be moved until you figure out a long-term solution. They can't stay near the kids. So, thank you for your time, and hope we get some action soon.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Courtney Dubakis, my husband and I live in Newport Heights, I echo the sentiments that all of my fellow friends at St. Mark Community Preschool just said. We have our son attending St. Mark, and both my husband and I, on multiple occasions, have had to call the police in the early morning when we're dropping off our son, because there's been homeless individuals wandering the entrance to the preschool, and we do not feel safe taking our son out of our car and dropping him off. I am shocked that we have to have this concern, living in a place like Newport Beach, but it's the reality, and I beg you all to do something soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Maggie Brewer, I'm the Director at St. Mark, and those five people you hear from, just heard from just now, are just a fraction of the people that I talk to day in and day out about this situation. I didn't prepare three minutes' worth of anything for you, I just wanted to look each of you in the eyes, and I want to tell you some things that we found on campus, and I want to tell you some things that I'm terrified of finding on campus. Every morning, our outdoor teachers walk through the yards, we've found broken beer bottles, we've found chicken bones, we find cartons of cigarettes, which with all the trees around, really could be quite a thing. Empty bottles, full bottles that are full of urine, these are things we have found. Things that we haven't found, but that I'm terrified of finding, used needles, and one of those 395 people you mentioned dead on our property. It's scary, and it's real, and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Pete Anderson, I'm here representing the Central Newport Beach Community Association. In your mailboxes will be a letter that we sent out, I believe yesterday, you may not have gotten to it yet, but I'm here to alert you at Sarin. Let me just give you some of the points that are important there. First of all, the letter explains why we are in favor of an expansion of the present Costa Mesa Newport Beach Shelter. We understand that there is an opportunity to double the space there. Your hands are partially tied unless you can meet the Martin versus Boise stipulations, the lawsuit, and an extra 20 beds for Newport Beach, if not more, will help get you to that point. Secondly, we ask your consideration of putting somebody from our Central Newport Beach Community Association on this ad hoc committee, where, you know, we are from the two peers, we're right down in the battle zone, so we think that we can add a lot to that committee and help you meet this challenge. And thirdly, our board members visited the Newport Beach Costa Mesa Shelter, and I gotta tell you, that is a great place. We were very impressed, we, Natalie, and I'm not gonna try to pronounce her last name, but Natalie, which I'm sure you all know, arranged for us to go there, and she accompanied us there. It is a state-of-the-art place, the people that, the clients that are, that have the opportunity to use that, you know, should be thrilled. There is wraparound services there, the staff was great, and what was especially impressive to us was the fact that Natalie and her compatriot from Costa Mesa are, you know, are just wonderful. They've got great hearts, they've got compassion for these people, and they are doing a wonderful job, and you, you know, you're lucky to have them. So, we at the Central Newport Beach Community Association feel that this is a very important issue, we're, we're there, and we want to help you, and we'd like to be a part of, of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Peggy Rose, I've been a Newport Beach resident for 26 years. Just real quick, I know we've all heard the absurd argument that the homelessness problem is because there's a lack of housing. Obviously not, it's mental health, as we've said, it's drug addiction, alcohol addiction, and there was a comment that the police said, "Well, being homeless isn't a crime." Well, maybe it should be, not the kind of crime that puts them in jail, but that forces them to get whatever help they need for whatever addiction or whatever problem they have, to put them in some sort of facility that addresses that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
John Schatz, Crystal Cove for 20 years. I spoke earlier today, and these people before me spoke very eloquently describing the problem to you tonight. I'm not gonna spend any more time describing the problem, we all know what that is. I'm gonna ask you for feedback. Why are your hands tied? Why haven't you done more? Why is it so difficult? Tell me the number-one obstacle. I've proposed solutions that get around this stupid court case with Martin. I mean, I want to know, and people want to know. Why does it, why is it taking so long? What prevents you from just going out and rounding these people up? We can't have a, no civil society can exist. Do you want this to turn into San Francisco? It's a literal sewer. You, I don't want that here. You have to do something. Don't just keep saying, "Oh, our hands are tied." Tell me why, tell everyone why. I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers on this one? Okay, I'm gonna bring it back here. I appreciate all the frustration, I immensely do. I was born and raised in Newport, I have two children, I actually live in Big Canyon, right next to it, I see it every day, it pisses me off immensely. I drive it every day, I also get our police reports every day, and we arrest there every day. It is hard, because we don't prosecute, they end up going to the county and they get turned right back out. And we do take their tents, and they go and pick them back up, and show right back up there, and it's a bus depot, and we don't have excuses. We're not up here because we want to make excuses, we're not, we didn't bring this item forth tonight because we're trying to pass the buck. It's quite the opposite. This is not something that just shows up on a regular council meeting, this is something that we put forth because we are actively trying to figure out any way we can deal with it. I think it's important to recognize, though, that our police, even though there might have been an issue where it's not working, or you didn't, weren't happy about a certain situation, they are working tirelessly and trying everything in their power to do it. And you're right, we are looking at every avenue and every venue, we are looking at what the reality of, you know, lawsuits that would come against the city are. We're, we're not afraid of them. We're sitting in the same shoes you guys are, we have kids in the same schools, and we don't like it anymore. You know, and we all have the same stories, neighbors, doors getting pounded on, being nervous about the same things, we're business owners as well, and so, any solution that is out there, we're listening. We're not shunning it, or not looking at it. The hard thing is, is we're trying them all, and that's kind of what this document's been about tonight, is if there's something we missed, we'll try it, we'll spend the money on it. You know, Lauren said she's looking at tightening things up, that's probably the only place we differ on homelessness, I'm willing to throw every dollar that we have at it. We want the same solution with you guys, and I think that's why we're here. We want to hear you, we want to understand your frustrations, and I do understand the bus depot problem more than a lot. The hard part we have right now is that it's moved, and we're constantly moving them, and that's getting worse, because now they're getting closer to the schools, they're getting closer to the neighborhoods, they're getting pushed to the residents, and I, not telling you we can't do anything, I'm telling you, we'll try to do anything. And so, I like hearing all of these pieces. I like hearing that you guys have a solution we don't, or something we haven't thought of. I mean, to the point where we're trying to put recreation up there just to move them along and make it more irritating, we're trying to do anything that we can. And so, I'm not here to discount any one of you, I'm here to say thank you for getting up here and giving us your concerns, because we have them too. We're not up here as politicians, we're up here as people that live in the community and don't do this professionally. We raise our children, and we have businesses here professionally, and we love the city the same way you guys do, and are frustrated in the same way, and sometimes it's tough when we feel like we're trying to make progress and it's not going anywhere, or we arrest somebody and they're back in an hour or two. It's crazy, and I think our police are feeling the same issues. And so, there is no stone that will be unturned for what we're trying to do, so that's the point in which we're working. And I hear from some of my other members at this point. Councilmember Grant?
First, I do want to thank everybody who's here tonight, and even the people that aren't here tonight that have written us emails, or reached out with phone calls to staff, and to everybody, everybody on the council, and especially the three of us that are on the ad hoc committee, which are Lauren Kleinman and Mayor Blum and myself. Thank you all, you know, this is a community problem, and having the community involved is very integral to the step, and anybody who's out there who has said, you know what, let me know how I can help, and I want to create, you know, neighborhood groups and that kind of thing, that is all very much appreciated. The number-one thing, the first and foremost thing that I want to emphasize is that outcomes are critical here. I hear, all of us up here hear you, that the outcomes are what is critical, not what we are doing or trying to do, or can do or can't do. We absolutely have to find some outcomes that relieve this burden on our community, and I don't mean only for our residents and our businesses and our visitors, because it is a burden for all of those individuals, but it's also not a good situation for the homeless people that are living on the street. So, outcomes are number-one, our priority, and we've discussed that very clearly with staff, with our police department, with all of the stakeholders in the community, that we're looking to make a change, that we, this is not business as usual, and we've spent a lot of hours examining everything that we're doing, and examining everything that other, other cities are doing, in trying to isolate places in our policy, in our ordinances, in, you know, all the actions that we're taking citywide to make a change. We are, I think, I know for sure that we're all in accord that lodging and maintaining personal property on the streets is not acceptable. It's not acceptable within 500 feet of a playground, or of a transit center, or of a preschool, it's just really not acceptable, and we are working towards a solution for that particular issue, and that's what we've heard from the members of the public here a lot tonight, is the real problem that's occurring very close to just this city hall. But the problem is a city-wide problem, we've got people who are camping in the vicinity of the peers, we've got people who are living in, you know, cars or vehicles on our streets, so it is a city-wide problem, and we want to make sure that we're addressing this comprehensively, and again, it's for outcomes, not just, "Oh, we're gonna try this, or we're gonna try that," but we absolutely must make some progress on this, and we will be instituting anything that you see in the directives that we put forth tonight, we feel is the first and best step to making sure that we have some positive outcomes. Just a few more comments, it's not acceptable when we're offering resources, Councilmember Kleinman went through all of the resources, multifaceted resources that we're offering to our homeless community, it is not acceptable for the answer to those to be no, and for people to remain on the streets. It is not acceptable for the answer to those to be no, and for people to remain on the street. And we will address that. That is just not acceptable. We are working as a, our staff, our council, our first responders, all of the stakeholders in the city have been offering as much as we can in the way of services to help people to get off the streets. And the answer of no is not acceptable, and we understand that. We absolutely need, need to eliminate the permanence of camping or living on our streets. And I suggest that everybody understand these directives. We're going to be discussing them here tonight. And know that we're going to be moving forward with whatever the consensus is here tonight to make sure that we get some outcomes.
Councilmember Shippleton.
Yeah, I want to start by saying thank you for being here. It doesn't go unnoticed, your emails, your phone calls, like the mayor spoke, like Councilmember Grant spoke, I mean, we're dealing with the same things. And I just want to be very clear that our first responders, especially our police, are not in the business of being social workers. It is not the job they signed up for, and it's very unfortunate, it's the role they're playing. So I am extremely confident, whatever incident happened in this city, they handled it professionally and the way they were trained. So we'll always stick up for our first responders and understand the comments. I mean, I, I'm six months on this council, and I ran a campaign about reducing homelessness, getting rid of signs of permanence. And you take this position, you realize there's a lot of things that have to happen to get to that point. I'll be the first to tell you, you guys have tents on this side of town? We have RVs. There's seven RVs parked in front of my house as we speak. I don't want seven RVs parked in front of my house. I've worked with our first responders, I've worked with our police, I've worked with our code enforcement. We're down to two. The last few days, we're booked to four. I mean, this is a game of whack-a-ball. We literally spent, I mean, I can tell you a story. Went down to the transit center, we removed 14 tents, put people in shelter, gave them, we were spending millions of dollars on resources and tools and techniques and ways to get these people off the streets. If it's addiction, mental health, it becomes very, very difficult. They were all back the next day, and a resident brought 14 tents and gave them to them. We are trying, we are working hard, it's not enough, we need to do more. I am fully supportive of the ad hoc committee and the work they're doing. I mean, I talk with the mayor, with Councilwoman Grant and Kleiman, and the effort they're putting on a day-to-day to stop this and do all we can. I mean, there is no compassion for leaving people on the streets, and we all agree with that. But we are, we are doing a lot, and we will continue to do more. But certainly getting more shelter beds, offering opportunities, enforcing anti-camping, I mean, it's, you go by Marina Park right now, and you're going to see five or six RVs with solar panels on the ground, with generators running. I mean, it is, it's, it's bad, and we hear you, and we're not doing nothing. We're, we're trying very difficult things and trying to move the needle. But I'll just say, I'm very supportive of the ad hocs committee, subcommittee for what they're doing. And my final thing is, the peninsula is no longer a battle zone. It's not a war zone. It is family-friendly. We're doing a lot to make sure we change that mentality, because I love the West Side, and it's going to continue to be a place for quality of life for our residents.
Mayor Protem.
So when Brad and I first joined the council about seven years ago, we didn't have a shelter. We had significantly more people who were homeless in the city, actually, at that point, based on our point-in-time count. And one of the flashpoints was actually the transit center at that point. And so the, there was quite a bit of frustration and anger. In fact, one of our few council meetings where we not only filled this chamber, but that chamber back there was actually trying to find a shelter within the city itself. And so we had suggested three locations, and we felt, we had hundreds of people there to make sure that we did not put a shelter inside of our city. And so we, we were able to fortunately work with Costa Mesa. Not sure where Pete's, Pete, you got your information? It's not, they're, they're not offering us 20 more beds at Costa Mesa, they're offering us five. And it was on their council meeting agenda this past time. And it's going to come back on their next agenda. I'm, I think we should, we should take the five beds, continue to work for, work toward, you know, using those beds to get people, to your point, Councilmember Kleiman, the focus needs to be street exits, continues to need to be that. I do appreciate the, the ad hocs efforts here, you know, and the discussion early on. So I, I, so because council policies are things where we are given specific direction in specific situations, I don't think it's quite a policy, council policy, but it'd probably be a resolution. I'd frankly like to work on it if, if we could figure out how to do that without violating a Brown Act, because coming up with a policy statement via a resolution would probably be a pretty good idea. And then the other idea, the other discussion that's in here about doing a ordinance, I know Councilmember Kleiman has talked about this in the past, looking at what other cities have done. I know I've heard you reference it, I think CDMRA or something like that, you know, Santa Monica, as a potential template. I think that's a great idea. I'd be supportive. I'd like to see that brought. I'm sure that that's, you know, that's something that you, you've been advocating for. I'd love to support that. And then for the folks at St. Mark's, understood. Ms. Brewer, you taught my kids, you work with my wife, I think you know that I would do everything I can to, to look out for, for families. I'd really love it if I could also understand where Pastor Davis is coming from, because when his comments were, were being made in Stu News on, at the end of May, it was very conflicting in terms of kind of the direction that he was talking about. I'd love to hear the, I'd love to hear him on the same page as the comments that were made tonight. If we could perhaps work on that, that would be really, that'd be really helpful.
I would love to have that conversation.
Yeah, I would love to have that conversation, because I've talked to Pastor Davis in the past. I'll just say, his comments in Stu News were pretty consistent with some of the comments I've had with him in the past. And so I, I'd love to have him a little bit more of a vocal advocate for you and for some of the positions that you're taking on the school safety side of things. So if we can get that, that would be phenomenal. And so anyway, I, I know that there's some work that's going to be taking place over at the, at the OCTA facility, but, you know, there's more to be done, obviously. So we should definitely be getting the, I'm looking forward to having Costa Mesa at their next meeting approving the, the five-bed agreement, then it gets brought to us for five more, and then we get to, you know, we get to get that pretty quick. And maybe we eventually get five more after that. But, you know, moving forward, that'd be, that'd be fantastic. So anyway, coming back around to the ad hoc references, fully support the idea of a, of an overarching resolution that, that actually puts this in writing. And then I would love to get an ordinance brought forward that I've heard advocated in the past. Thanks.
Councilmember Avery.
Yeah, you know, serving with Councilmember O'Neill on the previous homeless ad hoc committee, you just became quickly aware of just what an intractable situation it is. And I completely get, you know, we all get angry, and I, and I think, well, where's the anger coming from? It's coming from fear, right? From just, you know, not only of the, of the homeless individual that's in front of you that's scary, but just where is society going? What the heck is going on? You know, how can, you know, government not handle this problem? And it really is, is daunting, and it is so frustrating. As, you know, we're in this position here, but it, it is, I don't know what, what we can do. The county, you know, needs, the county's got to be a part of it, the church has got to be a part of it. We, we, there's no one silver bullet here, and it's, it's just trench warfare. To Mr. O'Neill's point, you know, we're just scratching for five beds at Costa Mesa, and we fill those five beds, there'll be just more, and then we're going to them for more. So the shelters are an important part of this, but they're, they're just short-term stops. And the real thing, of course, is people living in supportive housing, whether they're getting the services they need. That's the real way we're going to get people off streets, and everybody knows that. But getting there is very hard in terms of just the financial side. And here, we're a wealthy city. We've got $11 million surplus budget. So, you know, what, how do we spend that? And what can we do with that money to help seed something? Or partnerships with other cities to do another shelter? But that, that's the only thing I see to alleviate this, what I'm seeing here, just people want, we all want instant relief, we want it to happen quickly. And that is a tough thing. But I think we can get it done in the medium term, which would be probably a couple of years. But we've got to, we've got to partner with somebody, another city, or we've got to do something on our own to, to do this. It's just really tough to feel sort of helpless in this situation, not only for our residents, but for the people that are on the streets. And not to see improvement and actually see it falling back. There's 5,800 homeless people in Orange County. That's the last count in 2022. And it's, it's staggering. And, you know, I've got a family member, if it wasn't for the, if it wasn't for the Veterans Center in Long Beach, you know, he would have been on the streets. But the veterans, Long Beach was incredible with their work with people that are on, have been homeless or on the edge of homelessness. It's fantastic. But not that everybody has that availability, but they're doing a heck of a job. So it's a long way around saying, we don't, we're, we're trying to get the answers up here, but the reality is, they're really hard to come by. And, you know, when we first got up in this thing with our homeless committee five, six years ago, somebody came down here and said, "Just round them up and take them to Vegas, or take them out to the desert." You know, that is not, that's not good thinking, that's not a good statement. That's what we, you know, in a moment of frustration, I can see people saying that. But it's, you know, it's much more complicated than that. And it's not just, we're under the legal threat, but you can't take human beings and just put them in a cage out, you know, you, if, you need to provide a place where they can, you know, exist and be safe themselves. And that is, takes the work of government at all levels, and it takes the work of nonprofits, NGOs, and it takes the work of houses of faith to do it. And everyone's got to come together. So as a society, we've got to do things. And I sensed out here, there's, when people are ready to help, and it's just, how do we, how do we do that? So it's, it's excruciating to see this happen.
Because I'm the guy you're referring to years ago. But I didn't say, just take them out in the desert and put them in a cage. Take them out to the desert where you build a gigantic facility, 5,000 beds.
Guys, all right, we're not going to be yelling from, from, and please, we understand the law, actually. I mean, a huge amount of government and law and the ability for our city to maintain. Sir, I'm not going to have an argument with you over, please. We're frustrated too.
Thank you.
But we have parameters that we have to work within. And sometimes you're right, they're very frustrating. We, we would all like different solutions, but we're, we have to work within the solutions we have, and we're trying really hard to work within them. Okay? Any other comments from up here? Wonderful. Is there anything from us right now? We're going to work forward on that resolution piece, and is, can we, Aaron, is that going to work out?
Well, I think your options are, you could, you know, make some modifications to the ad hoc committee and kind of go that route. Or if you're looking to maybe move it along a little quicker, we can bring back a resolution and a draft ordinance for your consideration, and then try to get that moved pretty quickly. But I think those are kind of the two options you're looking at.
I would say faster.
Let's go with the faster option and the draft resolution, and we can discuss.
So with that is, because I heard the mayor pro tem express interest in helping to develop that, so I, I just want to make sure, since we have a homeless ad hoc committee right now, so who would be?
So the ad hoc committee would go away because they've made their recommendations?
Because they've made the recommendations, and we'd move forward with?
Let's get that piece forward, and then we can always deal with that after. Does that work for?
Can the, can the two things be separated? Because the ad hoc committee still hasn't done what it was tasked to do, which is to revise the contracts.
Yeah, I don't think we're ready to disband the ad hoc committee.
Can we move this to a policy committee?
So, so the resolution forming the homeless ad hoc committee mentioned expiration upon coming back and making recommendations. So that was what it was tied to. We could always reform the ad hoc committee with a different scope.
Okay.
Well, one of our recommendations is that we extend the scope in term of the ad hoc committee to incorporate the directives that we've discussed tonight. So, I mean, that was what the ad hoc committee came back with.
So just to clarify, I think that is an option. You could amend the resolution forming the ad hoc committee, and then work on the resolution and an ordinance with city staff. That'd be one way to bring it back. Or the, or the second option is to let the ad hoc committee, this ad hoc committee expire tonight because you've made the recommendations, and just direct staff to go form a resolution ordinance and bring those back to you for consideration. So really, the options are yours. This, the resolution forming this ad hoc committee did basically sunset upon making expiration, or making, making the recommendations.
I guess what we want to look at is the quickest way to get the resolution done, and then we will need to have a resolution to reform the ad hoc committee anyway after this. Is that what I'm hearing, Aaron? So because we made recommendations, we would need a resolution to reform the ad hoc committee, correct?
So what we could do is, is you, we could direct staff to bring back a resolution and bring back an ordinance. And then you could also, you know, parallel that with amending the ad hoc committee, but we need to know what the scope is going to be, you know, beyond the resolution and the ordinances.
So for the resolution part of it, would the council at all be involved in that? I mean, obviously, Mayor Protem expressed interest. I too would like to be part of that conversation rather than it coming back just from staff.
So we draft up at the staff level and bring it back.
But we can certainly include in staff working on it together with the mayor pro tem and with Councilmember Kleiman, who I'm hearing interest from. I mean, I think if we want to move quickly, a smaller group is probably better than a larger group, so I might suggest the two, but I, but of course, leave it up to council.
Great. Okay.
And also the ordinance.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll cycle the ordinance into that piece of the resolution, then?
Well, there would be two separate items, but they could, those could be worked on together with Mayor Protem and Councilmember Kleiman then, on those specific pieces.
Great. Perfect. Do you need anything from us, then, for our vote?
No, I just, I know it's a late night, but I, I'm, I'm not entirely clear on the, the ad hoc then. Maybe I would suggest we do these two pieces, because there's a lot of staff resources, and if we want to move quickly, I would like to prioritize working on these two items and on the contract with Costa Mesa to get the additional beds and keep that moving. So perhaps if we could, from a staff side, from our resource, if we could work on those initially, and then we could come back after that to see what the next steps of a potential homeless ad hoc committee is needed and what type of scope after that, if that would perhaps work for council.
Does that work up and down here? Lauren, you could, working with Will, get that resolution passed right away and an ordinance on the books, and then work with that, and then come back up, and we can do another?
Yeah, I'm okay with prioritizing so that we start to actually take some action items here.
Great.
I think that'll get it to where you want, and you guys will see it, and you'll be able to approve it. But I think there's been some pretty good templates laid out by some of these other cities up in LA that have been, you know, dealing with some of these issues for a longer period of time.
Great. Well, thank you, staff. Appreciate that. Thanks for walking us through that, so we can make this happen faster. Thank you for you guys, because you guys have put tireless work in on this, and I know it doesn't always seem that way out there, but it's a never-ending process of policy as well. Okay. Do we need a vote on this one?
We're just kind of determining if a vote's needed, or, or if it's under staff bringing it back. You think it's fine the way it is? Okay.
Great. Okay. Whew. Thank you, guys, for all coming out. Mr. Clear, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Seeing nothing. We're adjourned.